Okay, I appreciate everyone's patience as we deal with a little technical difficulty here, but I think we can go ahead and get started as people are brought into the panelists' room. Today is April 27th, 2021. This is the regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors for the County of Lake. And let's, actually, the first one is the one that I needed, Sheriff Martin. And it looks like Sheriff Martin is here with us. We have, I believe, three moments of silence today. I'd like to start with Sheriff Martin, and then we'll go on to our CAO Hutchinson, and then also go on to Supervisor Crandall. Sheriff Martin, if you could please start.
Good morning. Our moment of silence today will be for Charles Linker. Charles Linker was one of our volunteers here at the Sheriff's Office for several years. His grandson's also a lieutenant with the California Highway Patrol, who was a sergeant here in the Clearlake Area Office. And Charlie used to serve as a police officer in the city of Madera, I think way back in the 40s and 50s. He passed away after some medical issues here, and I'd like a moment of silence for him today.
Thank you, Sheriff. CAO Hutchinson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for this opportunity to reflect on the memory of my former colleague and friend, Matt Perry. Matt passed away all too early, at the age of 60, from pancreatic cancer over this past weekend. He began his career here in 1988, serving 26 years in the Lake County Administrative Office. For many years, he served as chief deputy CAO, and in the final years of his time here, starting in 2012, he was promoted to CAO. Matt was a kind and thoughtful person, and he was an extremely dedicated and loyal employee of the County of Lake. He brought many talents to his work, particularly in the area of budget and finance. In 2016, Matt acted on his longtime desire to relocate with his family to Utah, where he and his wife could be closer to their adult children and grandchildren. I admire Matt for taking the initiative during those years to do what meant most to him. But Matt was not done. While in Utah, he took on a second career in a university setting, which he found to be very rewarding. I can imagine that Matt was an incredible asset to his employer there, as he was to the County of Lake. I am honored to have served with Matt Perry during his longtime career, and I am confident that the County of Lake is a better place by virtue of his devotion to his work here.
Thank you very much for that. Supervisor Crandall?
Yes, I'd like to dedicate a moment of silence to Shelley Thomas of Lucerne. She passed away last week from cancer, and her family was the residents of Lucerne for many years. I went to school with their children. Shelley was a really nice mother to all, and her husband was a volunteer for, is a volunteer for, he did the football team, and so she was always a part of that. And so that's how we remember her as a mother and a nice person to all. So I'd like to dedicate that.
Thank you. Let's have a moment of silence. Supervisor Scott, would you please lead us in the pledge allegiance?
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Let's go ahead and see, do we have any extra items that did not appear on the posted agenda? Looking at staff or board members? Okay, hearing none. Let's go ahead and move on to item number five, approval of the consent agenda. Are there any items that supervisors wish to pull for further deliberation? So I'm going to pull item 5.3, and I would like to pull item 5.8 for further discussion. Let's go ahead and open it up to the public. Does anyone from the public, both in the Zoom room and in the chamber, wish to pull an item from the consent agenda? And if you're in the Zoom room, please press the button at the bottom of your screen to raise your hand, or if you're calling via telephone, please dial *9. It does not appear that there is any hands being raised, so let's go ahead and take action on the ones not being pulled. And again, that was 5.3 and 5.8 that was pulled.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve consent agenda 5.1 through 5.2, 5.4 through 5.7, and 5.9.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Scott and a second from Supervisor Simon. Johanna, if we could please get a roll call.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabate?
Aye.
Thank you.
And for the moment being, I'm gonna see if we can push those to the side, and since we're a little bit behind schedule, to keep with our timed items, let's go ahead and move on to item 6.1, our 9:05 a.m. item, public input. I know that we did receive a public input that has been attached, so I will go ahead and read that. If there is any other public input on anything not on our agenda today, please go ahead and raise your hand, or I'll look in the boardroom to see if there's any comments as well. This was received from Deborah Duran. "Is it possible to set up a regular monthly cleanup highway dates? County or Caltrans truck to throw debris? Incentivize residents with a gift card to Bruno's grocery outlet, et cetera? It is important to keep our beautiful county clear of trash to attract visitors." And so I just want to make sure that, to somewhat respond to that, I would say speak with our Public Works Department, who might be able to give you some information on how to become a Caltrans sponsor for a road. I know that happens often throughout our community on the highways, and that way, that does help keep our areas clean. I know the Lions Club is in Clearlake, as well as CC4C, and there's others throughout the entire county, so that might be a possibility. And then, not seeing any hands here in the room, let's go to the Zoom room. I see we have Mary Draper with her hand up. And Jake, if we could please unmute Mary Draper.
Okay, I have to promote Mary Draper to panelist, since apparently she's using an older version of Zoom. She is moving over right now. Mary, it looks like you moved over, but I don't see audio for you. You should be able to unmute. They might have called her with a phone. I'm gonna check with these two phone participants here.
And so Jake, since her hand was up, let's go ahead and make sure that we just come back to public comment, so we don't just bypass it. But let's go ahead and move on for time's sake, and we'll get back to public comment, and let me know when you have that fixed.
Mr. Chair, Dr. Bloom is also attempting to join Zoom, having a technical issue that he's working on resolving for the next item.
Okay. And I do see that we have Dr. Pace with us.
Mr. Chair? Yeah, I think we were all copied on an email from Mary Draper that she had sent to Scott Davion, and maybe that's the public comment. Would you like me just to read through that letter, or?
Let's go ahead and wait if we can't get her back on. Let's go ahead and read that. If we can get her on, then maybe she has something different to say. I'm not sure.
Okay.
But I do appreciate you bringing that up. I do see we have Dr. Bloom in with us. Is there still a technical difficulty, or are we good, Jake?
I'm bringing him in right now, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
He should land as a panelist.
Seeing as there's no further hands up, we will come back to public comment, and...
There's a comment, chat comment from Mary Draper as well, Mr. Chair.
I did not see that.
And Dr. Bloom is among us.
And I believe that Ms. Draper is trying to communicate with Jake. So let's go ahead and move on, we'll come back to that, and go ahead and move on to item 6.2, I believe. Let me get back to that, our 9:06 a.m. item, consideration of update on COVID-19. And we have both Dr. Bloom and Dr. Pace with us, and you can figure out who goes first. Welcome.
Hi, good morning, Mr. Chair and the supervisors and the public. I'll go ahead and do most of the presentation here. And so basically, update on the COVID response in Lake County. We are essentially moving into a new phase now, I think, of the responses. We've been kind of doing this over the last month or so, where we're really moving out of the crisis phase into the long-term maintenance phase, where I think we'll be dealing with the risk of infection in the community for an ongoing period of time, but the real risk of catastrophic spread and overwhelm of the hospital and all that seems to be moving farther and farther into the distance. So at this point, the cases are stable. We haven't had no recent deaths that are COVID-related. We're in the orange tier now in terms of businesses. The kids are back in school, at least to some kind of hybrid model, and the vaccination rate is upwards, getting close to about 50% for the people 16 and above. So we're kind of in this phase where things are a whole lot better. We're gonna be slowly moving into more normal activities, and there is still risks, so it's important for people to still use good sense and to get vaccinated as soon as possible. But the real overwhelming threat that we were seeing in the past is sort of moving away unless we start seeing some real changes in the variants and the ability to override the vaccine. So we'll have Sarah go ahead and give the data, and then I can kind of drill down to some of this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pace. Good morning.
Good morning.
Everyone. I just have a quick update today on the testing positivity, testings and cases, and the vaccination progress in the county. So for the last couple of weeks statewide, testing has started to increase. You can see that here by the graph on the left. The black line, testing was up to about 33 per 100,000 for the week of April 11th through the 17th. Fortunately, the testing positivity remains low at 1.2%. That's the seven-day average. And so it's great that we continue to see the testing positivity remain low, even with increases in testing. The daily case rate statewide continues to decline slightly, down to about 4.6 cases per 100,000. We were at about 5 per 100,000 the previous week. And the number of new deaths associated with COVID continue to decline on a daily basis, and statewide did cross over 60,000 COVID deaths in the last couple of days. But that rate has declined dramatically, as the case rate has declined dramatically. Like Dr. Pace said, Lake County remains in the orange tier, which indicates moderate transmission. This is based on data from April 11th through the 17th, with a daily case rate of 5.7 per 100,000 and a testing positivity of 3%. This is very similar to the metrics we, Dr. Bloom and I, shared last week. So things do appear to be stable in the county. This map here shows the status of counties, the 58 counties throughout the state, with the majority in the orange tier, like Lake County. There'll be an update at noon today, and I expect more counties to be moving, a couple more counties to be moving into the yellow tier. I'll note here that, just as a reminder, the state will, is planning on essentially doing away with the blueprint and this tier system beginning June 15th. That's a result of the vaccination rollout and more Californians being protected through the vaccine, as well as the very, the low case rates and stabilized hospitalizations. So we can expect that on June 15th, California will fully reopen, and this is, so as long as we continue to have enough vaccine supply and hospitalization rates remain low and stable. So we expect that change in the middle of June. In Lake County, again, looking at the last couple of weeks, the case rate, the number of new cases identified per week, remains fairly stable. And in the last week, we've actually had the fewest number of new cases identified, nine new cases identified in the last seven days. So this is tremendous progress. The testing rate is down a bit in Lake County, so I think it's important to get people continue to get tested. But this is promising news nonetheless, that the testing positivity has remained about the same, and fewer cases are being identified. The yellow line here, just wanted to note, the state last week finalized the new guidelines for small counties, and essentially made it, to move into the yellow tier, which would be the least restrictive tier, would need fewer than 14 cases per week, as well as a testing positivity below 2%. So the change there is, it, there's essentially, the testing positivity threshold remained the same, but up to 14 cases in a week would allow a small county like Lake to move into the least restrictive tier. So far, we haven't seen that, but we'll be watching that closely, and we would need two weeks of the case rate, or fewer than 14 cases in a week and a testing positivity below 2%. So won't happen. It's possible that it may happen by June 15th, but at this point, looking like we're pretty solidly in the orange tier. I'm gonna transition to talk about vaccination coverage and the progress statewide and in the county. So in California, about 68% of people, so more than two and three people in quartile four are at least partially vaccinated. So that's shown here on the right. These are communities with the most healthy conditions, as determined by the Healthy Places Index. And about 46% of people in quartile one are partially vaccinated, and you can see progress throughout the different communities in California. In Lake County, nearly 25,000 people are at least partially vaccinated, and that's more than 47% of residents 16 years in age and older. So it's about 6,400 people who are partially vaccinated, over 18,000 who are fully vaccinated in the county. So more than one in three people are fully vaccinated in the county. This is lower than vaccine coverage statewide. In California, about 58% of people are partially or fully vaccinated. So still work to do to ensure coverage of the population. And here, I just wanted to highlight vaccination coverage by geography, and then age group, and then by race ethnicity. So here, we're looking at aggregated zip codes in the county. So for the six zip codes on the left, about 36% of the eligible population is at least partially vaccinated, and the six zip codes on the right, about 48% of the eligible population is fully vaccinated. And you can see the population estimates for the number of people, the eligible people in these communities. So almost 30,000 eligible people in quartile two, and about 22,000 people in quartile one. Here's vaccination coverage in Lake County by age group. About 50% of people are fully vaccinated, who are 65 years in age or older, about 37% of people 50 to 64. This is the age group that saw the greatest improvement over the last week. And about 19% of people 18 to 49 are fully vaccinated, and this group is also increasing fairly rapidly. These data are now made available by the state. If you want to follow along, they're generally updated on Wednesday's, and they're available at covid19.ca.gov vaccinationprogressdata. And then my last slide, again, these data are now being reported by the state, looking at vaccination progress by race ethnicity. Note here that about 10% of the vaccine data have missing race ethnicity data, so these are slight underestimates of coverage by race ethnicity. What I'll highlight here is that about 44% of the white, non-Hispanic population is at least partially vaccinated, and about 40% of the Latino or Hispanic population is partially or fully vaccinated. These data shown by the state, again, the reminder, do not include data or do not include doses administered by tribal health. We include that in our, the numbers I reported. The 47% includes the doses administered by tribal health, but the state data does not include them. So it is, I expect, a dramatic underestimate of not only the Native American population, but also other populations, because tribal health is vaccinating people across the county of multiple race and ethnic backgrounds. So I'll just close there with, continue to see progress. Over 47% of the eligible population is at least partially vaccinated, and the case rate is stable, the testing positivity is stable, and we'll continue to watch and report these numbers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. So as you can see, we are continuing to do pretty well here. And so what that's doing, since we're talking about the response today, I'm gonna talk a lot about what we're doing around that. So one is, is with the vaccine sites. We are not filling the spots, the appointment slots, very well. The demand is continuing, but it's at a much lower rate than we were thinking. And we, part of how we've set up these sites is to really push the vaccine out as quickly as possible into the community. And I think that's how we've gotten the 50% rate that we're seeing. So now, we're in the process of shutting down these drive-through sites and moving the vaccinations to different areas around the county. So right now, we're just going to go ahead with these drive-through sites, is pretty much focus on the second doses and try to complete those, since we have a lot of those that are, that were started in the, you know, and now we need to, three to four weeks after that, go ahead and get the second doses out. So in the coming weeks, we're basically gonna be winding down these large drive-through sites, but we're gonna be focusing on the second doses in the next, there, just to kind of complete those. We're having, we have a good supply. We have thousands of doses that were, that are in storage right now. So we have plenty of supply. It's mainly just a matter of getting the doses to the people that want them. Right now, it seems like these drive-through sites have sort of served their purpose, that we've gotten a lot of people with those, but now the people that, the other 50% of the population either don't want them or are not using these sites. And so we need to kind of close those down and then start moving to a different model of getting the vaccine to them. The staffing issues have been kind of an ongoing problem, and these sites were, are needing to be used for other things now, so we're just gonna start moving away from them. The, so we're gonna basically end the first doses there and start having people get the first doses at other places. So the places to get those are at Sutter and at Adventist. They're both doing, not just their regular patients, but anybody in the community that qualifies. So those are places to go. Also, tribal health is doing them for their patients only. They're for all, for their registered patients. And some of the pharmacies, so Northlake Pharmacy and Safeway are both doing it, and we've just found out now that Walmart is starting to do them in Clearlake. So all of these, these three sites are all good sites to go get them. So this, that's Northlake Pharmacy, Safeway, and also Walmart in Clearlake is also just starting to do vaccines. So that's a good place to get them. And then the other possibility is the OptumServe testing site. So where we've been doing these, we've been, people have been able to get COVID tests at the OptumServe site, and there's one in Lakeport and there's one in Lower Lake. They are now going to start doing vaccinations as well. And so the, three days a week at each site, they're gonna be offering vaccinations, so people can go ahead and get those. And again, all of these sites are, if you're eligible 16 and older for the Pfizer, 18 and older for the Moderna, or the Johnson &amp; Johnson, you're able to go ahead and go to these sites and get them. It doesn't require you to be documented. It doesn't require you to have insurance. You will need an ID, but otherwise, that's pretty much what's needed. And they all are basically using appointments, as far as I know at this point. So OptumServe is starting this week in Lower Lake, and that will continue moving forward, three days a week, doing the vaccinations. And then in Lakeport, it will start next week, again, moving forward three days a week. And people can sign up for those on the MyTurn website. The Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine has been, was put on pause for a little while because of some current concerns about blood clots that were very rare but could be serious. And so now the CDC and now the state has removed the pause, so we're allowed to go ahead and start using it again as long as people get properly counseled to do, to, on what the risks and benefits are. The general thinking is that the benefits far outweigh the risk, but that's gonna be a decision for each person to make on their own. So, but that will be, start becoming available again as well. And then I think really, if we're unable to meet the demand in the public, then we're gonna go ahead and start setting up some sites again. But at this point, it looks like we'll be able to meet the demand through the existing sites and in addition with the OptumServe. So just encourage people to keep going to the MyTurn site or to contacting us at the Health Department if you need any help with this. We're also, you know, like I said, we're looking at how to reach the 50% that is not vaccinated at this point, and I think we'll probably be doing some mobile sites here in the near future. Once we're able to get our staff off of these large drive-through sites, we'll be able to set up some more targeted mobile sites to be able to go out to the communities where people are needing to get vaccinated and are unable to get in or need, you know, specific adjustments. So that's kind of what we're looking at, at moving forward here. Also, with the businesses and activities, we're in the, in the orange tier now. Like Sarah was saying, June 15th, we're gonna be going to, the state is planning on just removing the whole tier status and opening things back up. So we'll see how all that, how all that plays out, but that's the current plan. And more vax, more people being vaccinated will help that move forward. So I really encourage people to get their vaccine. There's some questions about proof of vaccines. The state did come out with some guidance about certain large venues having either proof of vaccination or proof of a negative test in recent days to let people in. I know at the Giants games down in San Francisco, they're doing that, and there's probably gonna be some other setups where they're doing that. So we're, you know, that, the state's just rolling out that guidance, and we're still trying to figure out exactly what that's gonna look like. So in light of all these changes and the fact that things are stabilizing, we're really in the process of kind of winding down a lot of the, the kind of full throttle response that we've been doing in the county. This has been going on for well over a year now, and it seems like we've been quite successful in how this has gone, and now we're in the process of trying to close things down. So our EOC, which is our command center that the county's been running at various points throughout this whole thing, we were running it daily for a while, and then weekly, and now we're, we've had our last meeting last Friday, so now we're just gonna be meeting on a as-needed basis. We've been putting out weekly press releases, so that we have, we put out our last one of those last week. And, you know, so we're in the process of just kind of scaling some of these things back. I am in, I, this is my last week in the job, and so, you know, we have a plan to go forward. The, there is a recruitment process going, although there's not anybody in the position at this point. Dr. Bloom, who's on the call and who spoke a couple weeks ago, is helping with this transition, and I'll probably be at least part of the process in terms of signing things off, but I have another job I'm going to, so. But we'll be teaming together to help keep things together, and the current Health Department team is, you know, continuing forward. So you probably won't even notice much of a gap, and then hopefully, somebody will be brought on board here fairly soon. And then hopefully somebody will be brought on board here fairly soon. You know, my general thinking is, is that what we're going to be seeing here moving forward is ongoing transmission at a fairly low level and that probably clusters of infection will pop up. And most of these are going to be occurring in people who are not vaccinated. There was some information that just was coming out this morning about some nursing homes where there were some outbreaks recently, not in our county, elsewhere in the country. And they were, in both cases, they were brought in by unvaccinated staff and then they got into the nursing home and there would be these little outbreaks running through. And the vast majority of the cases were in unvaccinated people and some of them got pretty sick. And some of the vaccinated people, there were low-level infections, but the, the risk of getting infected was pretty low if you had been vaccinated and pretty high if you'd been unvaccinated. And this is in some of the most vulnerable people around with the lowest response to vaccine, et cetera. So I think the message of this is, is that vaccination really helps. And there are some risks, but they're quite low at this point. And it's really a good idea to get vaccinated. Even if you are vaccinated, there is some small risk of getting infected. And so you need to continue to use common sense and masks and not go into crowded indoor areas, especially if you're somebody who has a compromised immune system that may not be mounting a, a really good immune response to the vaccine. But overall, I think people can, once they're vaccinated, they can start moving around the community freely and interacting with people more. And it's really much safer now and it's a whole different situation than it was last year because the, the most vulnerable folks are pretty well vaccinated and we're not likely to see this overwhelming situation with the hospitals. That, the only caveat to that is, is it's possible that some of these variants could end up emerging that don't, that the vaccine doesn't work on. But at this point, we're not really seeing that in this country. So overall, yeah, I just want to say thank you, everybody, for, this has been quite an exciting year and we, I think we're now through the other side of it. And so it's been a real privilege to work with the board here and with the folks in the Health Department. We've had a really great team that's been trying really hard to keep everybody safe in the community and a lot of community partners that have helped, the volunteers that were helping at the vaccine sites and everything. And so I just am very grateful for all the collaboration on this and I'm also thankful Dr. Bloom's willing to help for this transition period. So that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Dr. Bloom, before we bring it to the board, are there any comments that you wish to provide?
Thank you very much for the opportunity. Just a few brief comments. So I just wanted to stress what Dr. Pace was saying regarding the slow but sure demobilization and ramping down of the public health vaccination sites. And wanted to stress that there's multiple other outlets that you can get your vaccination at if you need to get your first or second dose of vaccination, which are throughout the county, the Sutter Center, the Adventist Health System, the Safeways, the pharmacies that Dr. Pace mentioned, as well as now Walmart, as well as the OptumServe sites. So many different locations to obtain vaccination. So there, there's certainly not a dearth of that in the county, nor is there a dearth of vaccine. So plenty to go around, you know, if, if it's still needed. The other, excuse me, one second. Thank you. The other point that I just wanted to make is that we're doing well, still have work to do, but we're doing well. And I'm, I'm very hopeful that this is going to get us to a point where, where getting back to a sense of normalcy, which is healthy. And that's part of our, our health as a community. So I'm looking forward to further vaccination rates to get us even further back to a sense of normalcy. And lastly, lastly, I just wanted to take a moment to express my sincere gratitude and, and thanks from truly the bottom of my heart to Dr. Pace for his leadership during this time of pandemic. He came into this position and, and this was not on the radar. This was nowhere in the cards. This was not anticipated. And yet he led us through this time as a professional and as an expert, always being honest and truthful and always with the best health of the county and all of the population in mind. So I, I truly just wanted to say thank you because this is unprecedented and I truly think he did an outstanding job. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's go ahead and bring it to the board. Any questions for Dr. Pace, Dr. Bloom, or Sarah? Supervisor Scott?
I do have a question for Sarah. Looking at her graphs, I noticed that she starts at age eighteen. Is there a reason why we're not going down to sixteen, since sixteen-year-olds can be vaccinated?
I thought I saw sixteen.
I, I think Sarah jumped off. I'm not exactly sure. I think, you know, mainly sixteen and seventeen-year-olds can get vaccinated, but they can only get the Pfizer vaccine. And at this point, there's not very much of that in the county. So it's actually a little bit challenging for those folks to get vaccinated. So I think, I'll, we'll ask her about that so that the next time. But just to point out, I think it looks like what's going to be happening here is the sixteen and seventeen-year-olds can get the Pfizer vaccine. And once we start getting more shipments, that'll be easier to do. There's some discussion about trying to see if we can get some vaccine sites set up at the schools or something like that. So we're in the process of kind of starting to explore that. The, the Moderna is, is, they're trying to get emergency use authorization for the Moderna vaccine from the twelve to seventeen-year-olds. And the thinking is, is that that may happen in May or early June. So that age range may be able to get vaccinated this summer. Under twelve won't be until probably late fall or something like that. So that's kind of the way it's looking for the kids. But we can find out about the specific data about that going forward.
Thank you, Dr. Pace. And I just want to thank you again for your dedication to Lake County. And it was an honor to work with you and having you serve our community. So we wish you well.
Supervisor Price, Scott?
I want to thank you too, Dr. Pace, for your compassion as a leader and always being accessible and open to anybody all across the county. You met with so many groups and the schools and, and I, this is unprecedented and it, and it probably is the most significant thing that any of us have been through and obviously the most significant part of your career. So I know it wasn't difficult, it wasn't an easy year. It was difficult by any measure, but thank you for being dedicated and thank you for believing in Lake County.
Thank you. Anyone else? Supervisor Crandall?
Yes, I'll echo those sentiments as well. And I just want to highlight that I appreciate the meetings that we've been in, Dr. Pace, and then just your willingness to assist in any capacity, way, shape, or form, situations with people in the community, and, and just the tribal level as well, just willing to meet, willing to handle problems and solve issues. I appreciate that and I wish you well in your, in your next endeavors.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, you know, obviously echoing across the board. So, Dr. Pace, I want to thank you, yeah, for just serving Lake County in the way that you did. You know, it was a tough time to be a leader and out in front of something, but I thought you did a great job. You know, my first stint as the chair was very interesting. So wouldn't have, you know, wanted to go through this with yourself and the rest of the Health, our department over there at Public Health. And, you know, I just want to thank you all so much. Really taking the serious attitude of our most vulnerable populations, I think is one of the most highlights, you know, throughout the last year, really attacking those both from our, you know, our, our senior facilities, plus our, you know, all of the minority communities in the county. So just want to thank you very much for that. Wish you luck on your journeys forward. But also want to thank, you know, in this conversation today, the entire board and everybody who went through it, through administrative staff. So, Dr. Pace, it was a pleasure. We are going to miss you, but we will keep moving on and making Lake County a better place. So thank you very much and have a good day.
Thank you very much. So with all the presentations, I was looking at some numbers yesterday. Ever since, I want to say approximately April, when we got our first case that we knew of, I've been tracking on a daily basis what's been happening with our testing, what's been happening with our deaths, what's been happening with our cases. I think we're seeing right now, and I'm crossing my fingers, that it maintains some of the lowest numbers we've seen since we really got into it. I was counting approximately five, maybe there's four more I'm not aware of, which adds up to nine for the last seven days. But all that looks good. If we maintain that, there's the possibility of going into yellow and that, just the possibility of that is exciting. And so let's hope that, that we, we can keep that trend going so that we can get there. I'm really happy that the state has kind of readjusted, especially for small counties, to be able to get into yellow. I know that I wrote a letter to the state asking for them to make those changes for everyone, not just for small counties, but I'm glad that the state was thinking along those lines already. And so let, let's hope we can get there. If we can get that last incremental step before June fifteenth of completely lifting restrictions, if we can get one more less level of restriction, it would be really helpful for all of us to, again, slowly migrate to that full, full, full release. I know that in my conversations with the state, the only reason that June fifteenth would change with the tiered system going away is if we start seeing vaccinated people getting sick. That is the only criteria that they're looking for to reassess that situation. And currently, nothing has come up for them to make that change at this moment in time. So keeping our fingers crossed that that is exactly what will happen and that June fifteenth is done. As of June fifteenth, I asked the state yesterday, does that mean if the tiered system goes away, that the state of emergency is done? They are not going to end the state of emergency as of June fifteenth because the tiered system is gone. So hopefully that will occur at one point or another. But I know it's a conversation that I would like to have with this board at the next agenda, not today. What is our trigger for us? We, we know we're going to see this on our agenda for the next two years for refund purposes and reimbursement purposes. Right now, we still have the Pawnee fire on our board agenda to be approved because of that. But the Pawnee fire emergency itself is over. At what point is the trigger for us to deem that our local emergency is over and that we just keep it going for the reimbursement process? I'm not going to act like I know what that specific criteria looks like, but I think it's a conversation we should have so that we could be aware of what steps we need to take in order to get to a point where we can go ahead and go back to normalcy. Normalcy does not have a state of emergency attached to it. Normalcy is without that. And, and I'd like to have that conversation coming soon. I do see somebody in our audience that I want to thank. I know that we've had struggles with staffing our vaccine clinics. And I see that Pam Harpster is here with us today. I know that we got the state at one point and then they disappeared at one point. And she was right there to help us out to make sure that we had what we needed to continue. It is a little saddening that we're better prepared than the amount of people that are showing up, but it's better to be over-prepared than under-prepared and appreciate the, her collaboration with the county to make that happen. And of course, all the work that's happened inside the county to make that happen as well. I know that, Dr. Pace, it's been a very, very tumultuous year. We, we were, we were working on smoking cessation and what happened to that? And obviously that got set to the side for obvious reasons. I know that you've been, you've been in the spotlight for, for quite a while. And in a sense, because of the way that a public health emergency, where the public health officer is the lead in that state of emergency, you've taken the, you've taken the fire from the firing squad compared to us because we, we are somewhat behind you in supporting you, but not necessarily at the forefront of the decision-making, which makes people either happy or angry. There is no middle ground to make everyone happy. And I know that this has been difficult. It's put your position in a much more political position than it ever needed to be. And again, that, that balancing, do appreciate the fact that you were open to speak with everyone, willing to figure out ways to find avenues towards solutions with everyone. There, there is nothing simple about the past year that you've endured. And, and I will say, compared to some other counties, we are fortunate that you stayed with us to help us through this during this entire time. This has probably been the most movement in public health officers ever than any other time that I can think of, at least at this moment in time. So appreciate your endurance and appreciate your hard work to do what you believe is the correct thing to do to keep our people safe. And I know that unfortunately, while we all have opinions, as do I, not all opinions are shared in a very respectful way. And you've, you've definitely dealt with the brunt of that. And I, I wish we could have done better for that. But again, appreciate your time here, appreciate the fact that we are where we are now at fifty percent vaccination rate with our positivity rates dropping and the potential of going into yellow. All of that is due to your entire staff as well as your hard work. So thank you so much. And definitely a thank you to the community also because it's, it's, it's up to them to make that decision to get vaccinated. It's up to them to make that decision to social distance, mask up, and, and remain safe. So it's been a difficult year, but I'm really looking forward to June fifteenth and, and further movement as we start dealing with other issues because there are still many others to deal with. So let's go ahead and if there's no further comment from the board? Oh, actually, I did have one comment and I'm so sorry. There is a, a bit of an issue in my mind and it just, it's something I want to bring up. I know I've had a couple of business owners contact me. In the new blueprint activity and business tiers, there was an update on April nineteenth, twenty twenty-one that talks about, and Dr. Pace alluded to this, talks about vaccinated sections and negative test sections. It speaks mainly of venues, but it also doesn't identify or define what venues are. So that could be a theater, that could be a bar where there's music, that would be seen as a venue. And, and they're offering, the, the state is providing very vague, very blurry guidelines on basically, if you can prove that you've been vaccinated, if you can prove that you've tested negative in the past seventy-two hours, then you can go to a vaccinated-only section. Now, I struggle with that on a very philosophical basis. I am one hundred percent sure the state has gone through their legal process to make sure that this is not a legal problem, but I still struggle for the fact that I'm looking at our percentages of vaccination rates and I'm looking at our percentages of population. And we're finding that people who are poor, people who are of color are not getting vaccinated at the same rate. Therefore, a vaccinated section will look a lot whiter than any other section. And I'm, I'm worried about that. So if you are a business that is planning to do that, I would say, please, don't just do this on your own. Reach out to a lawyer, reach out to your industry leaders in the state, in the county, and find out what are the best practices for that. Because just jumping and trying to follow these guidelines may lead to some other unforeseen problems. And, and I'm just kind of worried about that whole guideline from the state. And hopefully you will take, you will follow up on that cautiously if you plan to follow up on that. And please reach out to the state or your industry leaders. Our public health is only providing the, the guidelines that the state has provided to us. Public health is not enforcing those guidelines or pushing for these guidelines here locally at the county. So if you call, it would just take up staff time and you wouldn't be able to get any answers to truly help you navigate through that process. So please make sure you walk that line cautiously as, as there has, there, there, there could be some concerns. And so that's the last thing I wanted to put there. Let's go ahead and open it up to the public. I see we have one hand raised and that would be our C A O.
Yes, that is me. Thank you. I just wanted to express a few more words of gratitude to Dr. Pace for his service. to Dr. Pace for his service. I worked very closely with him at many stages during the pandemic, and, and quite honestly, it was not only inspiring to work with him, it really was an honor. I so appreciate his calm, composed, graceful leadership during what has been one heck of a storm. So just some thanks from me too, Gary. Thank you.
Okay, and I see we have a hand raised in the Zoom room, and we have Will Tuttle. Let's go ahead and unmute.
Yes, thank you. I guess I want to just start out here and a brief quote from Benjamin Rush, who was one of the signers of the Declaration of Independence, who said, "Unless we put medical freedom into the Constitution, the time will come when medicine will organize into an undercover dictatorship to restrict the art of healing to one class of men and deny equal privileges to others. The Constitution of the Republic should make a special privilege for medical freedoms as well as religious freedom." And to me, it's really shocking to see the way this draconian tyrannical regime has been rolling out, not only in Lake County, but you know, all over the world. And we're seeing it happening because of a failure of local governmental officials to resist. We, if, if you on your own, without the technocracy, coming from the health departments, coming from the CDC, coming from Big Pharma, which has basically captured governmental agencies and captured medical schools, if you on your own had told everybody in Lake County, "Well, we're just going to force non-essential businesses to close, and you can't go to church, and you have to wear a mask," everybody would have been up in arms, but, and would have resisted, of course. But when you roll it out as a technocratic fiat and say, "Well, the experts told us, the science is settled. The science, the scientists know best. We just do whatever they say. We abandon all responsibility for the Constitution, for our freedoms, and we just say, 'Oh, we're terrified of this pandemic,'" and we allow the media to be completely taken over, it has been taken over. This, this whole thing has been developing over the last decade, and it's now the point where we don't have any alternative voice. I mean, I, we understand this very clearly. And so it's important to understand that doctors, medical doctors are absolutely not scientists. Doctors learn to follow protocols, and they do what they're told, and this has been rolled out. And if any of these doctors, including Gary Pace or any other ones, didn't do what they were told, they would be fired. They would be, they wouldn't be here. So this whole thing is devastating, and the thing we have to understand is that there are people who are, who know a lot about this. Dr. Suckarit Bakhti from Germany, for example, has, who's had more articles published than probably any doctor in Germany, has been saying that this is an extremely dangerous vaccine. It's not, it's not approved by the FDA or by anybody. It's only authorized for experimental use. And it's been, whenever it's been used, and this is a coronavirus vaccine, they've been trying to do this for 20 or 30 years. They, and whenever they've tried it on animals, cats, or ferrets, or monkeys, or any animals, the animals always, it always looks great in the beginning because they, they create the antigen, but then they always die in agonizing death. And we have Michael Eden, who's formerly with Pfizer for 20 years. He was the head scientist of Pfizer, saying that this-
Mr. Tuttle, if you could please finish up your-
... killing people in, in, within two to three years, we're going to have massive deaths. So I know my three minutes, I only get three minutes. You guys can, can talk and talk. But we, we, I just want to say, the Nuremberg Trials have established the principle that if you, if you go along, this is, this is a massive crime against humanity, and you are responsible.
Mr. Tuttle, let's, let's get to the final point, please.
We are all taking responsibility for our actions here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And, and just to respond to that, the medical freedom still exists. No one is forcing anyone to get the vaccine. Just want to make sure that you're aware of that.
Is he, was he aware that we opened physician for public health officer as well? I mean, if he wanted to apply, he could have done so, you know?
I see other hands up. Let's go ahead. Jake, if we can unmute phone 6205.
All right, phone 6205, I've sent you an unmute request. Looks like you're muted. Will you please confirm your first and last name?
Good morning. This is Bart Levinson. Wow, it's hard to follow the last speaker. I'd like to bring us to the here and now and add my gratitude for Dr. Pace and your staff for everything that you've done to support us and care about us. And it's a little nervous-making to be looking forward without a replacement yet for you. My question is about the seniors and the senior centers. How will the seniors know about when the senior centers will be available to them again? And in this transition period, how will seniors know, just generally, what is safe and not safe? Where should they be looking for that information?
And I would suggest your best source for that information is calling up the senior centers. They are not closed. They're still doing quite a lot of work throughout this past year. They, they have been closed to indoor activities within the senior centers, but the services are still going strong, especially Meals on Wheels and such. So reach out to your local senior center, and I'm sure you can gather that information from them. All right, let's go ahead and go to our next hand raised. For some reason, I can't, oh, there it is. If we can unmute Elaine Zacker?
Hello there, Elaine. It looks like you are unmuted, but I'm not hearing any audio from you right now. You might have a hardware mute on your side? Maybe a mute on your headphones or something like that? All right, we still can't hear you.
Okay, while we're working on that, is there any other individual in the Zoom room who wishes to make a public comment on our COVID update? Or anybody here in the chamber who wish to make a comment? Okay, seeing none. Doesn't look like you're able to solve that problem for Elaine. If it's possible for you to type up your comment in the chat, that would be great. And just to remind people that if you do have technical difficulties, our board chamber is open, limited capacity, but our board chamber is open for the public to attend our meetings and to speak up during public comments as well. So please go ahead and text us, or email us, or put in the chat whatever your comment is, and we'll make sure and get that. And I, I think at this moment in time, I'm going to move on and return back to the board if there's any further comments. No?
You know, actually, I just want to make a comment. I, Dr. Pace didn't talk about this, but I think it's very, that people need to know, even after they get vaccinated, they're not fully vaccinated. They still need to wait a couple weeks to make sure that, you know, their bodies kick in with that. So don't think that you can get vaccinated on Monday and go about normal activities on Tuesday. So we still need to be cautious about that so we can hit that June 15th date and be able to, to open up without any more regulations.
And I, I think we should also recognize that this did not come from California. This came from overseas, and right now, overseas, as we're all seeing, there are some very unfortunate scenes being played out, especially in India. I know Brazil was having a lot of problems before. And so while we hope that we see trends moving forward in a positive way, I, I still think we need to remain vigilant and watch to see what unfolds in some of those areas. Because again, with travel and everything else, things move around very quickly, as we've already seen from last year's process and how it came to New York and how it came to California. So remain vigilant. So we're going to go ahead and close this up. Dr. Pace, thank you very much. Dr. Bloom, thank you for being here with us today, and also thank you to Sarah, as always, for providing the data. And we will go ahead and shut down this item and move on. Thank you so much. And moving on to item 6.3, our 9:40 a.m. presentation of proclamation designating the month of April 2021 as earthquake preparedness month in Lake County. And I believe our C A O office brought that in, and so I will go ahead and read that.
Yes, Mr. Chair, it was agendized at the request of, at the urging of Cal O E S. And certainly, we've had our share of earthquakes in the last couple weeks and, and all the time anyway. And our Sheriff O E S Director is also here to comment and receive the proclamation.
Would you like to read the proclamation, Sheriff?
Sure.
Please. Perfect. Thank you, Supervisor.
Thank you. Board of Supervisors, County of Lake, State of California. Proclamation designating the month of April 2021 as earthquake preparedness month in Lake County. Whereas Californians have witnessed and experienced earthquakes that have resulted in significant property damage, injuries, and loss of life and indirect costs. And whereas, as many as 10,000 earthquakes occur each year in California, and mitigation measures can save lives, reduce property damage, and alleviate economic impacts of earthquakes. And whereas, California is the first state in the nation to offer free, cutting-edge technology designed to alert residents before shaking begins through the earthquake warning California system via the My Shake app, Android earthquake alerts, and wireless emergency alerts. And whereas, every community member of Lake County can take proactive steps to protect their families, employees, and neighbors from earthquakes by learning about the latest technology and innovations available at no cost. And whereas, incorporating earthquake warning technology into emergency planning efforts can help mitigate risk of injury and death by providing a few moments' warning, enabling proactive measures. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Lake does hereby designate the month of April 2021 as earthquake preparedness month in Lake County, and Lake County shall join communities across California in encouraging residents to learn more about earthquake warning California, including downloading the My Shake app, using earthquake warning technology, and sharing earthquake warning resources with friends, family, and colleagues to help build a resilient community and strengthen the state of California in its earthquake preparedness efforts. Passed and adopted this 27th day of April 2021.
Thank you very much. Any other comments?
Just a couple. As, as your board is aware, and most people in the community are aware that work, especially those that work for the county, we participate in the Great Shakeout every year, and this occurs on the third Thursday of October. This year's Great Shakeout event is scheduled for October 24th. The, the intent of that is to bring awareness to earthquake preparedness. We encourage all people to teach, learn yourselves about the drop cover and hold on. Teach your kids about drop cover and hold on, and visit shakeout.org for more information. As, as we mentioned, there's dozens of scores of earthquakes that impact Lake County every year, and the vast majority aren't felt by most residents in Lake County, but they do occur here. And, and the vast majority don't cause much, if any, damage. But it is important to be prepared for that, that one big one. We know, we people to consider all disasters and their disaster preparedness, take into consideration that earthquakes are one of the myriad of disasters that we can face right here in Lake County. And if you've spent any time living in Lake County, you know that it's, it's not a matter of if, we're going to be impacted by some disaster, it's just a matter of when. So just keep in mind that we, amongst everything else, coronavirus, floods, fires, everything except train derailments, I think, here in Lake County, earthquakes are, should be on your mind. Have a preparedness plan. Have food, water, medications. Take into consideration your animals, your children. Be aware of evacuations that might be necessary, and if, if an earthquake is strong enough that your, your building might be damaged to the point where it's not safe to enter back in. And that goes for your home, your office building, stores, wherever you might be. These disasters are expected, and they're, know they're going to come. Although they're expected, sometimes you can't anticipate exactly when they're going to be coming. I'd like to close with, this is, a lot of this has to do with personal responsibility. If you don't, if you have a plan, but your plan only includes call 911 when something goes wrong, your plan's not adequate. You need to take steps ahead of time to be prepared because we know this is going to come. If, if all you have ready is simply calling 911, waiting for help to show up, you're, you're going to be disappointed. So please be safe, and thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you very much. And I would suggest, look around at our topography and, and some of our features in our county. It is very obvious that this is an earthquake area. We have a volcano in the area, and so this whole region has been built via earthquakes in our history. So I agree, this is something we should be prepared for. And luckily, some very similar preparations for this emergency in, when compared to other emergencies. Have your to-go bag ready to go, and just be ready for the inevitable. I was wondering if our I T coordinator, Jake, can share the screen just to at least show people where to go? I sent him the link for the My Shake. I just wanted to at least familiarize ourselves with it.
Did you send that via email?
Via chat. I'll send it again just right now.
Ah, here, got it. Okay. Yeah, let me pull that up real quick.
And so if you have a smartphone, just look up My Shake, and it seems to have been made over at U C Berkeley. That's the only place that I can find it at. And you'll see the shared screen soon. And so you'll be able to get it for your iPhone or for your Android. Basically, you have to have a smartphone in order to access this, and you'll see this page, and you can go ahead and download it, or just goes to the Google Play or App Store to be able to download it. And this seems to be based on new technology for early alerts, which could be helpful in saving lives. So please make sure to go visit those places and get that on your phone if you can. Thank you very much, Jake. Any other comment? Supervisor Simon?
Well, thank you for bringing this to the board. Reading that too, Sheriff Martin. You know, as we move forward with the Lake County Risk Reduction Authority, this is another focus of all risks in Lake County. And we'll continue on our education process as we move through the next year. So this is something we constantly talk about, that we're currently dealing with fire, floods, as Sheriff Martin said, but being prepared for all risks is something that the creation of the Lake County Risk Reduction Authority is prepared to take on in the future.
Any other comments? Okay, let's just open up to the public real quick. Any comments from the public? And seeing none. Thank you very much, Sheriff Martin, for bringing this to us, and we will move on to item 6.4, our 9:45 a.m. item. Consideration of Resolution Adopting Cannabis Equity Assessment and Adopting the Local Equity Program and Program Manual Pursuant to the California Cannabis Equity Act of 2018. And B, Consideration of Motion to Direct County Administrative Officer to Sign Grant Agreement Designated as Exhibit A. C A O Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Patrick Sullivan, my deputy C A O, will be presenting, or actually, excuse me, Patrick is our tax administrator. He will be presenting this item. This has been his project. Before we move on to it, I wondered if I could call another matter to your attention, though, and because it may be relevant to people listening. When your board comes back to the consent agenda items that you pulled for discussion, I wanted to request that you reopen number 5.9 because there is a title error on that item, and I want to clarify that for your board and make sure it is approved with the correct title.
Okay.
Thank you. So with that, good morning, Patrick.
Morning, Board. Patrick Sullivan, County Administrative Office. I'm before you today to discuss the cannabis equity grant. First off, I wanted to give an update of where it stands. We submitted our application earlier this year, and last month, the Governor's Office announced its intent to award $888,000. So it's not as much money as was given out in the past. The budget for this item was not as high as it was last year, but we're still pleased, especially as we look at comparable jurisdictions. What we got, it's right in line with, I think, what we would hope for. Few things that need to be dealt with. The first is the resolution that your board previously passed authorizing the equity assessment, the local equity- the local equity program, and the ability to approve the agreement, the authorization. The state has added a few requirements. There's an additional requirement about liability and the method of authorization. So I'd like to thank County Council, first off, for helping work through this. As far as I understand, there's not really any way to change the resolution. This is what the state is requiring, but the changes are pretty modest compared to what they were before. Then from there, I can give some background on what our intent is to move forward with this, the current plan, and what the funding allocations are within this grant. The main pot of money is $644,000, and that's for assistance with application, licensing, regulatory fees. And that's where we really have to determine how we're going to target who we want to begin with. Obviously, there's not enough funding to necessarily provide aid to every applicant that could meet the criteria that we have in our program manual. So the initial focus of this round, at least as far as we've determined so far, would be preferable, is that applicants that are facing barriers to entry in receiving their license, and particularly those that have not yet had an initial study completed, would hopefully be able to be addressed in this opening round. Please keep in mind, there will be another round of funding allocated in January. So hopefully, each year, we're going to be able to get an allotment, but we have to determine how we want to start with this. There has been a struggle, not just internally with staff here, but in other jurisdictions in the state as well, trying to ensure that these dollars are going to the equity applicants as the state intended. For example, there have been issues where well-financed or wealthy applicants have received funding or are eligible because they meet other factors, and the state really is pushing local jurisdictions to avoid that outcome to the best of their ability. So the initial thought that we have right now, in terms of how to approach this, is to begin with our factor for the size of operations. This is in the manual that is included in the board packet. The size of an operation by limiting it to one acre or less was the initial thought, and that would be a starting point. Priority would then go to those applicants who meet additional factors as we disperse aid. We anticipate demand in this group probably meeting the entire amount we have allotted. We don't think we'd be able to get beyond this group, but if we did, we could certainly expand out that criteria. And a lot of jurisdictions have looked at this as a way around some of these concerns about income and financing, under the assumption that smaller operations are going to have less access to capital, and that would help further the goal. I've been working with Tokara Thomas and CDD to help identify the groups of people that are in this window and trying to come up with some of these criteria. So certainly, if your board had additional questions, I would recommend speaking with someone from CDD. I see that Scott and Tokara are both on, and they may be able to provide further detail. But the general idea here is that these grants could assist with application fees, and more specifically, with the ability to use a third-party consultant to help complete that initial study, get some of the applicants that have been sort of stuck processing their application. It would help move them forward, which is one of the primary factors the state's looking at when we go for more funding in January. That's one of the most important things that we need to be able to demonstrate, that we are helping local applicants move through the process, get their permit, and be able to get up and begin operating. The added advantage to this would be it helps clear the backlog in general, so that even those who do not receive funding could still benefit, because whatever we can do to help move applicants along in general is a benefit to the whole community. The final factor to consider here as well is when we submitted this application originally, your board authorized $100,000 in matching fees, or as a match to this grant if it were to be awarded. The state wanted each local entity to have a financial stake in this. So now that it's been awarded, we do have the $100,000 in matching funds available. These funds are different than the state allocated dollars. Within the state allocation, there's $644,000 for assistance with licensing and application fees, as I stated. There's $100,000 available to help applicants with fixtures and equipment, $100,000 to help them with capital improvements, and it's more narrowly defined what the state will permit us to do with those dollars. The matching funds that we put in need to fall into the general criteria that your board has set in the Equity Program Manual, but there are more options available. The initial recommendation by staff at this time, though, is just, given the timeframes involved, if we wanted to put that money to use in the near future, it would likely be preferable to add it to the existing allocation, because that's what we would be able to get up and running more quickly. There are all those other options available for consideration. It's just not necessarily clear whether we could have any of those other programs up and running in time for January. So I just wanted to share that information and seek direction from your board on how to proceed for those matching dollars. And the final point is, if all of this meets with your board's approval, it would require a motion to direct the County Administrative Officer to sign the grant agreement itself, in which case we can move forward with the state, and hopefully, the end of next month, we would receive this actual funding. At least, that's my understanding for now. So if your board has any other questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Any questions? Okay. I do have some questions here directly related to the final plan. Let me get to it again. Going back and forth here. Oops, I opened up the wrong one. It's not Exhibit A. It's the local equity program. Is it possible to add or change any of the equity program? Because there's two things that pop up for me. Number one, I know it says at the bottom that there's a residence. Well, number one, is it possible to make changes to the local program?
Yes, it is possible to modify this throughout the life of the document.
That's what I thought. So one of the problems is, we already do a background check. We do fingerprints for everyone, and certain rules will kick out people, and I think that it maybe needs to be more described. I was just speaking with Brian Martin and had an email back and forth with him as well. So if you were convicted of cultivation prior to Prop 64, granted, if that's the only thing you were convicted of, then it's possible that you can go through the equity program. If you were convicted after Prop 64, meaning there was a legal avenue available to you, then at that point, you would fail our fingerprint background check that we currently have in place. And so if we can somehow provide a little bit more detail, rather than just saying if you've been convicted, because there is going to be some people who might think they fit, but don't. And I'm sure there's some other caveats that go along with that, and Sheriff Martin would be the one that has all the level of details. And unfortunately, he's not able to be here. He had to run somewhere else. So that's one. And then number two, I like the idea of trying to help people get embedded into the legal market. And then when I scroll down to the metrics, it says residency status, but I believe that residency status speaks to you became homeless because of, like, taking of your property. I don't believe that means that you're a local resident itself. Am I correct on the way that I read that?
Hey, it's my understanding that there would be two different factors here. There, one of these factors, and please bear in mind, none of these are exclusive, they would just be factors up for consideration. Homelessness, one of ours is any individual who became homeless or suffered the loss of housing as a result of cannabis enforcement. That would be one way to meet a factor. The other way was that residency consideration, and that was geared towards ensuring that someone lived here between 1971 and 2016, because that was during the period of enforcement, pre-legalization, and therefore kind of indicating that you were impacted by this, rather than having come in more recently. And I think that was the goal behind it.
Okay. I apologize for missing that, and I see it right there, that it does say at least five years. I just wanted to make sure that nobody's being brought in so they can meet this criteria and being used as an applicant for someone else behind them, because even now, currently, I know a lot of our applicants, there's a lot of investors behind them. It's not necessarily all coming from the applicant. So I didn't want to see that being used as a process to access our equity program. So I appreciate that that's still there, but I still think that we need to hash out the conviction history a little bit more, so that there's no surprises when, thank you for submitting your application, sorry you were denied due to this. If we can have a little bit more detail, I think it would help to prohibit useless applications being submitted to us, where we start going through the process and then eventually hit a wall where we can't keep moving forward.
And I would say, right now, I don't think we would be in that situation since we are prioritizing people that are already in the process. This would be a question for CDD, but I think all of these people would have already made it through the background. But in the future, this would be an issue, and we could end up facing that prospect of applications that would go nowhere.
Right, and I'm definitely thinking about just from now on, rather than just what's already in the hopper. And I'm going to apologize tremendously and embarrass myself here. I'm wondering if you can repeat the guidance you're looking for for the allocation that the county put in, the $100,000, some of the options, and if you can repeat that portion of your presentation.
Yes, so the question, the direction we're looking for with the county allocated dollars is how your board would like to proceed with those. We're going to be developing the direct aid program that's going to be applicable to those state allocations. That's going to be essentially the first thing up that we need to get going as soon as possible. We would have the option of either adding our county matching dollars into that allocation, or we could pursue any of the other options that are listed in this program manual. And your board wouldn't necessarily have to make this decision today. It could be something I could consider in the future, but any of the other options in the manual would be acceptable within the state guidelines. So as you look throughout it, there's technical assistance services. I know some of the things that came up in the past were assistance to ensure public and private road access, cannabis cooperative associations, assistance with expungement of criminal records. And there are several pages of listings, but any of those would be acceptable uses for our matching funds.
Okay. I think I'm going to open it up to the public before I speak on that. Any other comment? Supervisor Price, Scott, thank you.
I'm just in agreement of getting the matching funds to direct aid for this year, since there's just less than nine months left of this calendar year, and make sure that we can get those funds put to good use right away. I think the other ideas are great, and we should work towards that with the technical assistance and business assistance and expungement. Those are excellent priorities to shoot for, maybe next year, but this year, just getting that direct aid out.
Thank you. Any other comments before we open up to the public?
I'm in agreement with Supervisor Price on that.
Okay. And let's go ahead and open it up to the public in both the boardroom and the Zoom room. Please raise your hand if you have a comment, and I see, is that, nope, it's on and off, and now it's off. Again, press the button at the bottom of your screen if you want to raise your hand, or dial star nine. And I see we have Elaine Zacker again, not sure if this is related to the topic at hand currently, but let's go ahead and give that a shot and see if we get audio this time.
Hey, Elena, it looks like we are still not getting audio from you there. See, you toggled the Zoom mute, but it looks like your, it still looks like your microphone is muted, maybe physically.
Okay, and again, if you wish to follow that up with an email or a text in the chat to let us know what your comment is, if it's related to this item, there's unfortunately nothing we can do about technical difficulties from a personal device. And again, our boardroom is available for the public to sit in and attend our meetings and provide public input here. So let's go ahead and bring it back to the board. Any comments or questions? So I'm going to agree as well with the direct aid. And direct aid, I hope, also allows for submission to contractors to review SEQA, do SEQA, things like that, so that it's not just a payment while it's possibly on hold and waiting for a long time. Let's allow the process to move through as efficiently as possible by accessing those services that we've acquired, so that those equity program licenses can go ahead and move as smoothly as some of the others who can already afford to go through those processes. That would be my suggestion for ensuring that that's part of our direct aid. And I don't know if we will need to have a consensus on agreeing on that or not, or if somebody wants to put it in there.
Do you want a motion?
Yes, and today, yes, we need one overall.
Mr. Chair? You have two action items on today.
We broke it.
You have two action items on today. I tried to do both. So this direction to staff would fall under which one? Or is it a clarification to one of the exhibits, just to ensure? And you can give direction to staff to bring something back to you for action, but you have just two action items today. So if you're going to make a motion as to priorities, it should fall...
Sorry to interrupt. We lost the COLBG audio in the Zoom room.
You can't hear us?
Sam, does that mean that Jake can't hear us?
Hello, can you hear me? Okay, I think what we need to do is to take a five-minute break and have Jake do a reset.
So it looks like we will take a, let's go ahead and take a 10-minute break. We'll come back at 10:45. Apologize for the inconvenience, and we will be back promptly. Okay, just want to do a quick round check. We have, Sam is ready. Jake, are you ready? And Johanna, are we ready also?
Jake is here, and he's ready.
Johanna as well.
Okay, and it looks like we're not getting any feedback, so things have been solved. Thank you so much. Let's go ahead and get back to our conversation of 6.4. From what I understand, I spoke with Mr. Sullivan real quick during the break, there is no need to finalize anything for our matching funds today, so we can go ahead and move forward. Mr. Sullivan, I don't know if you want to provide any further comments on that?
No, I don't have any further comments on that, but I did want to share, we had more information on your other suggestion about the use of contractors. That's something that I have had discussions with CDD staff about, and Tokara Thomas is available to speak, and she may be able to provide a little more information than me there.
Oh, perfect. Thank you so much. Deputy Director Thomas, welcome.
Thank you. Hello, hello. Let me just pull the letter up.
Let me just pull the letter up again. This was just some draft language that we've come up with that could be helpful. So I'll read the letter out for everybody, or the draft language. Our records indicate that you have submitted a major use permit application for commercial cannabis cultivation date, whatever date was the submission date. The county has determined that the completion of the environmental review to complete this submitted permit application requires the county contracted consultant to review per at-cost project reimbursement form that was signed and dated by you on date of signature. The cost of the consultant review will be paid by you. The costs may vary depending on the complexity of the analysis selection of it. And any consultant for a peer review shall be at the sole discretion of the community development director or his designated. For project projects, the planning director in consultation with the applicant may enter into a contract with a qualified consultant without requiring a separate RFP, Lake County Ordinance Article 10 purchasing. And then there are three selections that the applicant can make. Yes, I would like the county to complete the environmental review with the assistance of a consultant. Please respond to this correspondence in writing within five business days. I would like to hire my own outside consultant. Please note that if you desire to retain the services of your own consultant to complete the environmental review, that as the agency, the county has to review and vet any submitted environmental reviews before permit issuance. Finally, I would like the county to continue the preparation of my environmental review, acknowledging that if the permit processing has exceeded the hours allowed for the permit that I will be invoiced for that time. And this language could be amended to include language that if they select their own party, their own consultant, that they could use the grant funds that were allocated to the county.
All right, thank you very much for that. And as Mr. Sullivan had told me, we'll go ahead and come back to speak of the matching funds at a later time. And we can go ahead and move forward with what is being presented to us today. Is there any further questions from the board or action?
Did we already do public comment?
Yes, we did do public comment.
I'll offer the resolution. Yeah.
Okay, resolution has been offered. Johanna, roll call, please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon.
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall.
Aye.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Thank you.
And then there's a Part B, looking for a motion.
You want to go ahead? Did you have it written?
No.
I see you write something down, so I thought you...
Oh, no. Go ahead.
So a motion, I'll motion to direct county administrative officer to sign grant agreement designated to Exhibit A.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Crandall, second from Supervisor Simon. Johanna, roll call, please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon.
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall.
Aye.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, motion passes, and we are done with that item. Thank you very much, Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you.
Moving on to our 10:15 a.m. item, 6.5. Presentation of the Development and Implementation of the Big Valley Groundwater Basin, 5-015 Groundwater Sustainability Plan. Director DeLeon? Or Deputy Director Delagianis?
Good morning, I'm handing this straight off to Deputy Director Delagianis.
Alrighty, thank you, Scott DeLeon, and thank you, the board, for having us here today. My name is Marina Delagianis, and I serve as the Deputy Water Resources Director for the Lake County Watershed Protection District. So I would like to provide just a little bit of background before I hand it over to my colleague and our contractor, Ludorf and Scammanini, who will be giving the presentation to the board today. So this item comes to you as it relates to some of our previous items that we've brought to the board most recently and relates to our Big Valley Groundwater Basin and our compliance with California Sustainable Groundwater Management Act. So just a little bit of a background. In January, our district released the request for proposals, so our RFP, to aid in, to find a consultant to aid in the development and implementation of our Big Valley Groundwater Basin Sustainability Plan, also known as our Big Valley GSP. So from this request for proposals process, we did receive three different proposals. And after careful review and consideration of our consultant selection board, this consultant selection board identified Ludorf and Scammanini and partnering with Stantec Consulting Engineers as the most qualified firm to carry on this project. On April 13th, the Board of Directors approved and authorized the notice of award and the contract with, between the district and Ludorf and Scammanini and Stantec to aid in our development of our Big Valley Groundwater Sustainability Plan Development Implementation. Since then, although that wasn't that long ago, we have hit the ground running. And today, I am excited to introduce our lead project manager, Eddie Kiestel, who serves as supervising hydrogeologist with Ludorf and Scammanini and partnering with Stantec, who serves as our consultant, to outline our approach and our timeline to complete the project at hand, which is our Big Valley Groundwater Sustainability Plan Development Implementation. So that being said, I would love to pass it over to Eddie, who will be sharing with the board and the community our updates. Thank you.
Thanks, Marina. And again, we're really, really excited to be here. It's been a bit of a journey. And hopefully, one day, I will get to meet you all, the board, in person. So really, what I'm going to do is sort of give you a general outline on kind of our team and kind of where we're headed over the next, you know, six to seven months. And so I think with that, I will move on to Slide 3, which is again, just the introduction of our team. You know, given sort of the short timeline that we need to develop this groundwater sustainability plan, it really does take a large team. So we've kind of presented an OR chart on the right-hand side of your screen. And again, lots of names, lots of boxes. I'm Eddie Kiestel, I'll be the project manager, sort of leading this effort. And also, the effort's really about a 50-50 split between Ludorf and Scammanini and Stantec Consulting Engineers. I know there's a couple of my team members out there. Vicky Kressinger is actually our president at Ludorf and Scammanini, and she's going to be providing, being a technical advisor. And then Ibrahim and Kristi are with Stantec. And again, they're taking on key management goals as we kind of move through this process. Kind of moving to Slide 4, you know, I talked to Marina and Scott several times. And again, I think, you know, our sort of understanding of stigma aligns really well with the county in that we want this plan, or actually the groundwater management, to really occur at the local level. So it's driven at the local level. We, or you all, get to decide, you know, what is considered sustainability. And again, we agree locally on how we're going to achieve that sustainability, if perhaps some would say we're already there already. And again, just for folks who are aware, if the locals cannot sort of, you know, develop these plans, implement these plans, there's the threat that the state, you know, is going to be the backstop. But again, we're pretty confident, just based on our experience with this team, that that's not going to be an issue for us. So I just wanted to kind of let you know, our sort of philosophy on groundwater management really does align well with Scott and Marina's team and their team. So now I'm moving to Slide 5, just a general outline of our tasks. Again, these are just directly from the RFP. And really, Tasks 1 through 9 sort of funnel and help support Task 10, which is why we're here today, is we really want to develop this groundwater sustainability plan, right? So we've got really till January 2021 to kind of pull that information together and get it into the state so they have a chance to review it. So let's talk a little bit about the project schedule. Again, there's a sort of a cartoon rendition of the schedule on the right-hand side of your screen. I'm not going to really touch on all the specific tasks. But we did have a meeting yesterday. It was sort of our official kickoff meeting with the team to kind of lay out the schedule, the tasks, and kind of get this journey underway. And really, we have from April to November to develop the groundwater sustainability plan chapters. I'll touch on that a little bit later. Our goal is to have a draft of the plan available for public comment in November. And then obviously, you know, this is a local stakeholder-driven process, so the local stakeholders' comments, perspectives, opinions are really important. And so we want to make sure we include those. And then again, this will be all wrapped up in January 31st, 2022. We'll put a red bow on it and hopefully submit it, well, we will submit it to DWR. Just kind of moving through now, you know, as I think Marina's alluded to on previous presentations, we all love acronyms. So, you know, what we're really talking about is this groundwater sustainability plan. That's what's required in January 22, '22. There's an annotated outline that DWR has put together that really details out some suggestions on what that might look like. But really, kind of bringing it down into sort of, you know, simple terms, there's really five parts that go into this groundwater sustainability plan. So Part 1 is sort of describing who we are. Part 2 describes sort of the basin geology and hydrogeology. Sometimes I like to refer to Part 2 as we're trying to better understand the bathtub that has the water in it. And then Part 3 is, you know, how are we going to go about sort of defining how we're going to be sustainable? And there's some processes and tools that are available through DWR that we can touch on here in a couple of slides. And then obviously, if needed, there's going to have to be projects and programs that are implemented, perhaps, to make sure we are being sustainable. Again, sustainable, sustainability is going to be defined at the local level. And of course, Part 5 is how are you going to pull this all together and actually implement the groundwater sustainability plan? So fortunately, for Lake County, the actual development of the plan, the GSP, is being funded 100% through grant dollars that have been sort of applied for and granted through DWR. So that's a good thing. Again, just sort of walking through the different parts that are going to kind of get factored into the groundwater sustainability plan. So Part 1 is, you know, describe who you are. So that's really organizational information, maps, cities, sorry, cities and towns, where they located the water districts, the land use, you know, where are the wells, existing groundwater management activities, which you all have a lot of. So we want to make sure we capitalize on that good work and include that into the sort of the Part 1 of the plan. And again, just, this Part 1 is just describing, you know, who you are. And then Part 2 really gets into sort of the technical information. So we're starting to look at the hydrogeologic conceptual model, the geology. We start to look at, you know, cross-sections through the subsurface and try to get a better handle on the water budgets. So, you know, the analogy of a water budget is kind of similar to your bank account. You know, ideally, you don't want to be spending more money that's being deposited. So we've got to kind of work that through, and there's some specific requirements that are sort of required by Department of Water Resources on what types of water budgets we need to include. And then also, we want to factor in growth. So as the county or as Big Valley starts to grow or continues to grow, we want to make sure that there's, that's factored into the plan. And then also, we need to sort of capitalize on the existing monitoring program. We know you have a lot of wells out there. So again, we don't need to use all of them for the plan, but we want to make sure that we incorporate that good information that's been historically collected over the years. Part, Slide 10 is really just sort of a, you know, a conceptual understanding. So again, these are requirements under Part 2 of the GSP. So we want to understand graphically kind of what's going on. Again, I use this bathtub analogy. But again, we want to make sure that we can represent that bathtub as accurate as we can. So understanding the lithology, the geology, the surface flow, the, you know, who's using water where, that's all kind of part of this Part 2. It kind of gets factored into the plan. I mentioned water budget, so the analogy with sort of your bank account. You know, we're required, under the sort of GSP regulations, to develop a historical water budget, so what's happened in the past. We've got to also develop a current water budget, what's kind of going on today. And then we've got to kind of look out into the future and see potentially what the water budget would look like into the future. So again, this is sort of the water budget term. You'll probably hear me say this sort of over and over as we kind of move through this process. And then Part 3 really is, you know, how do we define sustainability? How is it measured? What are the metrics we're going to utilize? And again, this is, you know, an opportunity that we really want sort of the public to give input and review. And we want to make sure that we're very transparent in the process. So ultimately, you know, what is the sustainability goal? That's sort of included in the groundwater management plan. And then we'll start to look at sort of these undesirable results that sort of help us develop these metrics to better understand how we're going to be sustainable. So now I'm going to kind of move on to Slide 13. So these sustainability indicators, there's six of them. Some folks reference them as the six deadly sins. So I think, you know, in Big Valley, we don't have a seawater intrusion, so we don't have to worry about that issue. But these indicators, I know Marina's sort of talked to you about these in the past, but, you know, there's groundwater levels, reduction in storage, degraded water quality, land subsidence, and then surface water depletions. And then we'll, as we kind of move through the process, we're going to sort of develop these metrics to better understand and quantify, you know, if the sustainability indicator is an issue. So as an example, and it's an easy one for folks to kind of envision, is, you know, lowering your groundwater levels. So how do we sort of better understand that? We utilize the current monitoring network to sort of look at how groundwater levels have changed through time. So again, that's sort of Part 3 of the GSP plan, or element, I guess, of the plan. And then 4 is sort of looking at potentially projects and/or management actions that help to ensure sustainability and trying to figure out, you know, who's responsible for implementing those projects and management actions. And sort of to the right-hand side of your screen, I've included some examples. So, you know, recharge project, supply augmentation project would be sort of an example of a project. But perhaps a monitoring program or, you know, groundwater pumping allocation would be sort of a management decision. And again, nothing's been decided. These are just sort of examples that we've sort of implemented in other plans. So that's sort of Part 4 of the plan. And then Part 5 is, you know, implementing the plan. So laying out a schedule, you know, the costs that are associated with implementing the plan, understanding the process as we kind of move forward into the next 20, 30 years. And that again, has to be part of what they reference as the GSP implementation schedule. So I've included in an example, again, nothing's been decided on the specifics, but just shows you, we're going to have to map this out into the future. So those are the parts that go into the plan. And really, what we try to do is we take those elements and we're going to actually include it into specific chapters. So the, you know, Department of Water Resources has developed an annotated outline. And for the most part, we're going to kind of follow it. But I've kind of laid out what we're sort of proposing as chapters, actually, in the plan. So sort of Chapters 1 and 2 are sort of aligned with parts, perhaps, 1 and 2. And then Chapter 3 is when we start talking about the sustainable management criteria. And 4 and 5, again, are just sort of related to projects and management actions, and then groundwater sustainability implementation. And then there'll be obviously some other chapters, perhaps, that get included. Again, we're refining this sort of outline this week, and we're going to sort of present that to staff probably early next week just to make sure that we're all sort of on the same page. And then there'll also be sort of additional technical appendices that'll get included into the plan. So kind of looking ahead, where we're, you know, headed for the next 30 days, it's really, we're kind of starting to dive into requesting information from staff, from county staff. Also, I mentioned that developing the detailed GSP outline, we're working through that. There's going to be some very close coordination with the advisory committee, I think in May and June. And then, you know, in regards to developing the technical content for the plan, sort of this Chapters 1, 2, and 3, we're kind of focusing on those chapters first. And so that's sort of what's going to be happening in the next, you know, 30 to 45 days. So a lot of work to do, but we're really excited to kind of get this underway. So I think with that, Marina, I'm kind of done. I don't know sort of the process, but I'm happy to address questions, discussions, comments, whatever the board wants to see. So I'll just pause there and I guess push it back to Marina.
Alrighty, thank you, Eddie, for that presentation. As Eddie mentioned, we are more than happy to take any questions or comments from the board and then also the community as well.
All right, thank you very much for your presentations. Any questions from board members? Supervisor Pyska?
I was just wondering if you could show this slide that showed the boundaries of the GSA?
So again, we're just kind of starting the process, but this is sort of, this is sort of your, the Big Valley sort of boundary.
The other outline north of that is the city of Lakeport, or is that a different boundary?
This is Scott's Valley here.
Got it. Which does not have a GSA at this moment.
Not required to submit a GSP, correct.
And these boundaries were created by the California Department of Water Resources, Bulletin 118. And I am more than happy to share those resources. Those are... Those are also on our County of Lake Water Resources website as well, so.
Okay, thank you very much. Good. Any other questions or comments? I do have a quick question. How does the unfortunate drought situation that we're facing, how does it impact your process? Does it, is it something that it can handle? Is it something that it already has, you have the capability to really get to the nitty-gritty of the true data versus the potential difference in data during a drought situation? Just kind of curious if there's any impacts and difficulties that come along with this.
Yeah, well, I mean, two things, I guess. The first one is, you know, the plan is due twenty-twenty-two, again, January twenty-twenty-two. So drought or no drought, we've got to put together the plan. But as we kind of work through the process, we're going to, we're going to sort of develop a base period. So ideally, when we kind of go through that process, we try to pick a timeframe, you know, I think the minimum requirements, looking at the historical base period is about ten years through DWR, but we try to establish a base period that kind of picks up in those wet and dry cycles. I don't think we'll obviously pick up on a twenty-twenty or twenty-twenty-one period. It'll probably be looking at maybe two thousand to two thousand and eighteen, but again, we'll pick up on those wet and dry cycles. But the drought scenarios will actually be factored into predictive scenarios that we have to do, so there will be components that we have to include of how drought, how the drought will have impacts to sort of the water resources.
And I appreciate, I appreciate that. And I get it that the whole reason behind the GSA is to have sustainability for the future so that even during drought periods, it can remain sustainable. And so this is exactly why we're doing the work. It's just some things are more difficult when we're dealing with those scenarios as well at the same time. So I appreciate the fact that you're looking at previous data rather than culminating all the data together with the most recent stuff. Any further questions before we open it up for the public? Let's go ahead and if we can close the shared screen, please, and let's go ahead and raise your hand if you're in the Zoom room or if you're in the chamber. Okay, let's go ahead and start with the chamber with public comment. Please go ahead and step up to the microphone. And for the Zoom room, click the button at the bottom of your screen that says raise hand, or if you're calling via phone, dial star nine and we'll call on you when we get to you.
My name is Joan Moss. I've been concerned about water for a long, long time. What I read on the internet is that our water, groundwater table in the state of California is sinking at the rate of a dollar, of a foot a year. We're looking at a really rough drought. I'm wondering why this hasn't been done before, and if it has been done before, what is history and where we're at? We're looking at a bad fire season. I understand that in different parts of California, it's different, but I don't want to keep sinking at a foot a year. That's what the universities say is happening in the state of California. I wonder what this state person says, thinks about that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there any response from either Deputy Director Delagianis or Eddie?
Mrs. Moss, I'm more than happy to put you in contact with our state representatives. If you have a contact information that I can get ahold of you, we can have a conversation. I can give you a call or send you an email. So if you have a preference, let me know. I'm more than happy to carry on that conversation with you.
Thank you very much for that.
I can respond, and again, just, you know, the numbers you kind of presented or discussed are sort of general averages. And so I would sort of encourage you as we kind of develop the GSP for Big Valley to sort of, you know, it'll give us a chance to better understand the local system, so kind of what's happening in other parts of California is not really related to kind of what's going on in Big Valley. I mean, if you kind of look at sort of average water levels, you know, in Big Valley over the last fifteen years, they've generally been stable compared to the problems I think you're referencing are sort of probably in the San Miquim Valley, where because of decreasing water levels, we're seeing subsidence occur. So again, I think it's generally really sub-basin specific, so I would sort of encourage you to sort of focus more on the local aspects and how we can sort of develop a defensible plan for this county and not kind of lump us in together with the larger state. So that's just a sort of a comment.
Thank you for your comment or your response. I see no further hands up in the Zoom room. Again, just a final call. Raise your hand if you have a comment on this item. And I see no one else in the chamber who wishes to speak, so let's go ahead and bring it back to the board. Any final questions? This was the report only, no action necessary. And I don't see any more comments or questions. So thank you both for your presentation. Appreciate the work that you're doing and, as has been stated and implied, this is important work because ensuring the sustainability of our water, specifically for those who use it for drinking water, those that are using it for agricultural purposes, it's, we need to make sure that we're good stewards of our water that we sit on. So appreciate the fact that you're working on this.
Thank you Chair, and thank you board for your time today.
All right. Let's move on. Let's, since we're done with all our timed items, let's go ahead and go back. And there was a request to reopen our consent agenda. We had approved it all, and I believe we need to pull out item five point nine, is that correct? So if we can make a motion to, not quite sure where the wording is, but to reneg on our original motion to approve everything.
To reopen?
To reopen, thank you.
Mr. Chair, oh, sorry.
You rescind the prior action and then take it up again.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to rescind our action on the consent agenda that we did earlier today and move that we reopen the consent agenda calendar.
Okay, we have a motion from Supervisor Simon and a second from Supervisor Scott. Johanna, roll call please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatia?
Aye.
Thank you.
And then looking for a motion to approve all items except for five-three, five-eight, and five-nine.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Scott and a second from Supervisor Simon. Johanna, roll call.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatia?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go ahead and go in order here. We'll start with five-point-three. A, waive the formal bidding process pursuant to Lake County Code, Section thirty-eight-point-two, as it is not in the public interest due to the unique nature of goods or services. And B, approve the agreement between the County of Lake and Redwood Community Services, Inc., for the family stabilization program provided at the NEST during fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two, for a contract maximum of two-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand dollars, and authorize the board chair to sign the agreement. I do not see Director Todd Metcalf with us. Oh, yes, I do see him, he's there. The reason that I pulled it was due to the agreement saying it was for twenty-twenty-one, from July first, twenty-twenty, to June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one. I just wanted to make sure and fix those dates so that it covered the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two. I do not see any other needs for changes other than that, but I will open it up for Director Metcalf if he has any comments.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chair. Thank you for this opportunity. I apologize, I'm having some video issues this morning, but yes, it was brought to my attention that the fiscal year in the contract is incorrect. And so on the contract, it says it's for fiscal year twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty-one. It really should read twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two. So I'm asking that this item be approved with the fiscal year edit, and we'll have to send out a corrected version of this contract for signature since this iteration has already been signed by county council and the contractor. But I'm looking for approval of this with that edit.
Thank you very much. Any comments from the board? Let's go ahead and open it up to the public. Anyone from the public wish to make a comment on this item? And seeing none, let's go ahead and bring it back for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to waive the formal bidding process pursuant to Lake County Code, Section thirty-eight-point-two, as it is not in the public interest due to the unique nature of goods and services, and approve the agreement between the County of Lake and the Redwood Community Services Incorporated for the family stabilization program provided by the NEST during fiscal year twenty-twenty-one through twenty-twenty-two, per contract maximum amount of two-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand dollars, and authorize the board chair to sign the agreement.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Scott and a second from Supervisor Simon. If we can get a roll call, please. Johanna?
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatia?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's move on to the next item, five-point-eight, adoption of resolutions rescinding prior rejections and accepting certain roadways for public use for the purpose of providing increased water flow and necessary fire hydrants for fire protection to the community of Mount Hannah subdivisions number two and three. And I do apologize that I did not bring this to Director Deleon's attention earlier, so this will put him in the hot spot, and I apologize for that. But one of the parts of the resolution says now therefore be it resolved, and it says it for both of them, says that this board accepts the offer of dedication of the roadway designated as Road Number One, as shown on said map for public use. The roadway designated Road Number One, AKA Cary Lane, and obviously, there's the other road, which I think was Admiral Way, or am I correct?
Admiral Way, Labina North, Labina South.
I think it was only Admiral Way that we had on there, if I remember correctly, is not accepted in the county maintained road system. And I just wanted to at least have a discussion about this. If we're putting something below the road as important as a water main for fire hydrants and other infrastructure, it seems important to me that we maintain that road, whether that's gravel and dirt grating, or whether that's chip sealing, whatever is appropriate for that. I, I, I'm very concerned about this non-maintained public roads when there are residences there and there is vital infrastructure below the road. I would like to see if we need to bring that as a separate item, because I don't want to stop this from moving forward, or if that can be changed within the resolution that we have here, since it is saying now therefore that we are accepting, that we are accepting the road to be made public, but not accepting it as a county maintained road system. So just want to open that up to Director Deleon before we open it up for the rest of the board. And again, I apologize for putting you in the hot spot on this one, or a hot seat.
Well, good morning. So the item that's before you is not unlike several others that we've done recently for the purposes of installing public water mains in, in these roads, specifically on, up on Cobb. The, when the subdivision maps were, were accepted, and, you know, we have the dates on, on these, but they were, you know, in the fifties. Typically, what happens is the, the offer of dedication is accepted by the board, and it's been the board's policy since, I believe, the eighties to not accept roads into the county maintained system. So, you know, this, this goes back to the fifties where the board approved the map, but they did not accept the offer of dedication. Therefore, the road, the roads that are shown on, on the map, you can't put public utilities and different things in them because the board never accepted them. Now, there are some provisions that allow for your board to reverse that action, and that's precisely what we're proposing today. And there's a reference to the government code that, that allows you to do that. The offer of dedication remains open, and then you can come back at a later date and, and accept the road easements for public use, which again is what we're proposing that you do. I am, well, I'll, I'll stop short of using the word vehemently, but I am not in favor of accepting these roads into the county maintained system. Again, it's kind of been the board's policy to not accept subdivision roads and parcel map roads, et cetera, into the county maintained system, although you do accept roads on behalf of the public. We, as you know, are challenged to maintain the road network that we have and to add additional burden is, is not something that I am going to be in favor of. Again, what your action today will do, will, it will allow the installation of the public utility in, in the road network as it's shown on the map.
Okay, thank you very much. Any comments from board members or questions? Supervisor Pyska?
This is, well, since you've brought it up, it's a difficult thing to talk about because we have so many roads that are outside of the maintenance system. And this, these are not large roads, they're small, they're short comparatively, and we're also looking at further work in the consolidation of the other neighborhoods. So if we were to make a change like this, I just wonder what sort of precedent it sets for the rest of the county and how we would go forward with the rest of these consolidation projects. And I think it's a larger conversation that we need to have about our road strategy, separate and apart from this action today, which we have to move forward on to, to make, to, to start the work on, on this project. So that's where I am with it.
Okay. And just in quick response, by seeing some of these roads that are unmaintained public roads, I think we've set a very bad precedent in how we are supporting some of our communities that are being left behind due to those designations. And I, I know that it's a matter of capacity and it's a matter of funding in order to be able to do those things, but I do believe we need to have a good conversation about how do we change this? What was done in nineteen-fifty and what was done in nineteen-eighty does not necessitate us to continue that status quo. We can find ways to move forward. So I'd love to, at the very least, bring this back so we can discuss it in greater detail and allow this to move forward today. Any further comments? Supervisor Scott?
Just a comment that, you know, I wish we could accept this into the county war, road, but we can't take care of what we have. So I think we need to focus on maintaining and upgrading the roads we have, and then when we get to a point where we feel confident that we're doing that, then come back and look at what else we can accept into our roads.
Yeah, you know, I'm kind of, I'm on the same lines with Supervisor Scott that, you know, since we came on board, obviously, we do know the challenges. I think long-term conversations definitely need to happen, but at this time, I would support our Public Works Director that, you know, we move forward in this manner and stay status quo at this point.
Okay.
I'm willing to have a discussion in the future, like was announced by both Supervisor Pyska and Supervisor Sabatia.
Perfect. Okay. And let's go ahead and open it up to the public. Any public comments on this item? Go ahead and step up to the microphone, please. And again, if you're in the Zoom room, press the raise hand if you wish to raise your hand and make a comment, or dial star nine if you're calling via telephone, and we will get to you after public comment.
Joan Moss, I want to comment that at the public meetings I went to of the CAC before Ms. Pyska was a supervisor, it was one of the goals of the committee to get the maps accurate. During the valley fire, there were so many roads that were listed that were not accurate. They, they didn't say the right name, they didn't say where it was, they didn't say whether there was a dead end or it continued, and I think the roads up at Cobb need to be mapped accurately also.
Thank you. And I do not see any further public comment. Let's go ahead and bring it back to the board for either further comments or action.
Mr. Chair, it's a resolution. Offer the resolution?
There are two resolutions.
Okay, offer the resolution rescinding prior rejections and accepting certain roadways for public use for the purpose of providing increased water flow and necessary fire hydrants for fire protection to the community of Mount Hannah subdivision two? Do I do them separate? What can I do?
You have to do each res-
Each resolution has to be separate.
Okay.
Okay.
So resolution has been offered for Mount Hannah Subdivision Number Two.
Okay. Supervisor Simon.
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall.
Aye.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Thanks.
Mr. Chair, I offer the resolution rescinding prior rejections and accepting certain roadways for public use for the purpose of providing increased water flow and necessary fire hydrants for the fire protection to the community of Mount Hannah Subdivision Number Three.
And resolution has been offered. Johanna, roll call, please.
Okay. Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall.
Aye.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you Director De Leon for being here for that conversation.
Thank you, Board.
And let's go on to item 5.9, Approve the Big Valley Groundwater Sustainability Agency, GSA Charter Document, and I will bring that to CAO Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is just very simple. We want to make sure your board approves this with the proper action and title because there is a resolution associated with this that needs to be adopted. So, as you can see on your printed agenda, the title of the item was Approve the Big Valley Groundwater Sustainability Agency Charter Document. And what it should say is Adopt Resolution Approving the Big Valley Groundwater Sustainability Agency Charter Document. And so that would be the action you want to take in terms of your approval.
Thank you very much. Any discussion here at the board? Okay, let's go ahead and open it up to the public. Anybody have a comment on this item? And seeing none, let's come back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I offer the resolution for the Big Valley Groundwater Sustainability Agency Charter Document, our plan.
With the amendments?
As amended. As amended.
Okay. Resolution has been offered by Supervisor Scott. Johanna, roll call, please.
Okay. Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall.
Aye.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and that is the last of our consent agenda items. Let's go to item 7.2, Consideration of Requests from the City of Lakeport to Reallocate the County's Share of the 2018 Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Multi-Family Housing Program Funding of $7,594,201 to the City of Lakeport to Develop Multi-Family Housing Units. CAO Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Susan Parker, Assistant CAO, is here to present this item, and Kevin Ingram, Lakeport City Manager, is also present today.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Assistant CAO Susan Parker is going to present this item, and City Manager Kevin Ingram is also present and will speak.
Thank you very much.
Good morning, Board. Earlier this year, the State of California Housing and Community Development Department released the policies and procedures for the 2018 CDBG Disaster Recovery Program, which includes the construction of multi-family housing. This document included an allocation for both the Lake County and the City of Lakeport, 7.5 million and 2.4 million respectively. The City of Lakeport approached the county and inquired if the county was going to pursue that allocation to build low to moderate multi-family housing. At that time, I shared that I was unaware of any department pursuing this funding option. We, with the City of Lakeport, confirmed with the state that the county could reallocate this allocation to the City of Lakeport. Subsequently, the City of Lakeport has finally, has formally submitted that request, which was in your packet today. Yesterday, I learned indirectly that the City of Clear Lake was also interested in a portion of that allocation. Unlike the City of Lakeport, the City of Clear Lake did not receive a 2018 CDBG allocation. I apologize. However, I did confirm with HCD yesterday that this board was, or has the discretion to reallocate their allocation to the City of Clear Lake, should you choose to do so. I think it's in our best interest to keep all these monies within the County of Lake to serve our communities. And I have asked City Manager Kevin Ingram to share an alternative to splitting the allocation portion to prevent the loss of these funds, should the City of Clear Lake be unable to provide the due diligence and the tieback requirements for this program. So Kevin, if you could, please, thank you, sir.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chairman and Honorable Supervisors, and thank you, Susan, for, for bringing this proposal forward. Really quickly, just kind of a little background on, on where, what got us to this point here. We've been having some conversations for the past few months with a couple potential affordable housing developers who are interested in some sites here in Lakeport for the use of these, for these monies. As, as Susan put in there, the set aside for the City of Lakeport is roughly about 2.4 million dollars, and it can only be used for affordable multi-family housing. And of course, there's a number of different parameters, being CDBG money. We've learned that there's, there's always quite a few strings and hoops to jump through to use these, but overall, this is a very wonderful program. With our set aside of 2.4, we'd probably be, you know, realistically able to get one project off the ground, but as I stated, we've been having some conversations with about three developers, and I would probably classify two of them as being serious proposals. The third one is, is not completely, you know, kind of hashed out, and it's not clear if they're able to fully do that project. But seeing that this money, you know, rather than having it, you know, be turnkeyed back over to Sacramento and put into the general pot as an effort of trying to keep the money here in Lakeport, or in, I'm sorry, in Lake County, our request was to potentially move this money over into our process. We don't have any official projects underway. I think the next step in this process, once the money is allocated, is we'd be looking to submit out a call for projects in the beginning of June and review those projects, you know, shortly thereafter. And, but determining the amount of money available would determine the number of projects. In conversations with Susan regarding some of the, the other pieces, and I've also talked with the city manager, my counterpart over there in Clear Lake, Alan Flora, talking about, there is some potential for Clear Lake to, to utilize some of this money, and I know they also have some projects available. They, they have some projects that are potentially on the books that could be assisted by this as well. We're completely open to that. I, at this point, I don't know for sure that we would be able to utilize all these monies. My biggest fear, like I said, was having to turn this money back over to Sacramento. So, one of, one of the options that I have on the table, because I know we haven't completely figured out how Clear Lake would get these monies, if they qualify through, would they need to submit a due diligence packet in process? I know that was due for us in the middle of March. We're completely willing to work with Clear Lake, and the county for that matter, on other projects, and there may be an avenue there where we can, you know, potentially look at a sub, sub-recipient sort of agreement there as part of our process to allow Clear Lake to use that money. That might even allow, if we do receive proposals from someone in the unincorporated area as well, that might be an option. So, I think, you know, the, my biggest piece was not having this money roll back into Sacramento, but we're not looking at hogging this entire thing. If, if Clear Lake's got a project, I think that's a completely legitimate piece to try and get them the assistance and help they can as well. So, with that, I'm willing to answer any questions and, you know, discuss any other specifics that I can. And so I'll, I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Anything further, Susan?
No, I'm just here for questions also. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you both for your presentation and your information. I do appreciate the fact that City Manager Ingram started these conversations, I believe, as of yesterday, as well as Ms. Parker, and the fact that you're willing to split it and, and share. I, I am very much in gratitude to that. And then we'll see what the board decides, and any comment? Supervisor Pyska?
I, I appreciate this collaboration and willingness to work together to make sure that the funding, the funds stay in our county. It's a, it's a great opportunity we can't let slip by, but it's just a reminder that we need to take this work more seriously so that we have projects in the pipeline and we can go after this. That's, that's my only comment. But I, I appreciate that Mr. Ingram is willing to work with Clear Lake and the unincorporated areas if there are projects outside the bounds of the city.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Scott?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank, oh. Just like to thank Kevin for coming forth and inquiring about this money. The last thing we want to do is return money back to Sacramento if we are able to use it here, and knowing that we need housing, multi-family housing, low-income, moderate housing, I mean, many of the issues that we talk about goes back to our, our housing inventory. So, I, I agree with Supervisor Pyska. I wish that we had all our ducks in a row, that we were able to go forth and have this project, but I'm thankful that the City of Clear Lake does and is, is willing to, to do this. I'm a little concerned about piecemealing the funding, just to, because it would be nice if we could, you know, give all the money to the City of Lakeport and have them decide how these projects will play out, so we don't end up having projects fall to the wayside because there's not enough funding to finish the project. And I think that's really all I had, and just, you know, thank you again for Kevin for coming forth and making sure this funding wasn't returned back to the state.
Thank you very much. Any further comments from the board? Supervisor Simon?
You know, obviously, collaboration throughout the county for housing is, you know, you know, a great thing for everybody. So I do want to thank the City of Lakeport. Kevin, thank you for coming today with the proposal, and I know working with the city is, you know, if they can collaborate together, I think is a positive thing. So obviously, in support of that, I know that this funding is coming from the Mendocino Complex Fire, if I'm correct, and I just want to make sure that anything we do today, we just maximize the dollars and it's, you know, able to be used by the City of Clear Lake, because I know Lakeport obviously was affected more than Clear Lake by the, the, that complex, the Mendocino Complex Fire of 2018. And, you know, I just want to make sure we're doing all those things. But in complete support to keep the dollars here locally in Lake County to help us with our housing issues.
Thank you.
So I guess that was kind of a question. So with that being with the Mendocino Complex, all this is, I guess that would be to Susan. All of it's good if we, if we approve it in the, the basic concept we're talking about today, we should be able to maximize this $7 million that's available to, in Lake County.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yes, just, no, I, I agree with moving forward with this. I do, however, you know, know that on the North Shore, there's, there's like at least two or three spots that, you know, could benefit from this type of funding. I just know that it's difficult to work with the developers at this time, but I know there are some willing developers that, you know, that have been reaching out to us on different occasions. It's just unfortunate that we're, we're really behind, and we don't have the necessary people in place to conduct some of the work. Like, the, I think it says that we don't have a coordinator, so you know, that makes it difficult as well. So, so I agree with Supervisor Pyska when it comes to capitalizing on the funding for the county.
Ms. Parker?
Yes, I just wanted to add or respond to EJ, I mean Commissioner Crandall, is that part of this process is the solicitation of developers, and so they will be given an opportunity to respond to that solicitation if they have qualified projects to move forward for this fund.
Thank you very much. I think that this agenda item, when I first started reading through it, was, was a very frustrating thing to read through. We talk constantly about rebuilding, we talk constantly about some of our issues, which is a lack of housing or a lack of good housing in the first place. And then to see potentially 7.5 million dollars slip through our cracks when there's so much need in the unincorporated is a level of frustration that lights an absolute fire on some of our conversations that we've already had and that we're continuing today about the absolute need to get ourselves organized for housing. And so I don't want that fire to extinguish. We need to bring that back to the board for further discussion. If it's a housing coordinator position, that's what we need to discuss. If it's another plan, we need to discuss. I think we need to have a very open mind on how to move forward with this. There will be more funding that comes along, and we cannot afford to, to lose this. The fact that it's eligible for both cities to utilize, I think we should grow with the idea of lifting all boats at the same time. Let the water rise and lift all boats, and this idea of sharing is the best way, in my opinion, to move forward. That way, we, all areas of our county, or as many areas of our county can move forward. I do want to ask Ms. Grant, and maybe it needs to be the Ms. Parker, but it says here on the recommended action, authorize the county administrator officer or designate a draft letter to California Department of Housing and Community Development Department authorizing the reallocation of the county's 2018 CDBG Disaster Recovery Multi-Family Housing Program. If all we have to do and share a funding to the City of Lakeport and the City of Clear Lake, is that the only thing we need to add to make that appropriate? And then the City of Clear Lake with the county will work on what kind of documentation is required to make that complete, such as the documentation already submitted to us from the City of Lakeport? Am I correct on that?
Susan.
Oh, sorry. I was looking at my screen. I didn't see your hand. Ms. Parker?
I apologize. We did this previously with the 2017 CDBG DRO with the City of Clear Lake, and all they require is a letter from us relinquishing our allocation to the City of Lakeport. And then subsequently, Kevin and Alan and ourselves can develop that, those documents to, as a sub-recipient, or to work together for these programs.
Okay. And, and in the recommendation, it doesn't say, I know in the letter, it requested for the full 7.5 or whatever the actual amount is, for the full amount, is the, I, I just want to make sure that if no projects happen in Clear Lake, because nobody steps up and says we want to do a project, then it's eligible to go entirely to Lakeport, and if Lakeport has that same scenario where nobody steps up to do a project, that the entirety is available to Clear Lake. And the idea is, again, no loss of dollars that we were given to the county, does, does that allow that to happen? I just want to make sure that it's, it's flexible in how it gets apportioned.
It is, but I will allow Kevin to speak to that a little bit more, but we feel that is the best path forward to-
Okay.
-to move in that direction.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I think, I think that would work good if you, if you, if you amended it to include, you know, both the cities, you know, because I was unaware until just yesterday that, that Clear Lake was eligible. So, if, if HCD is being flexible, I think we should take advantage of it, and I think more than happy to, they kind of gave us a deadline of May 4th to get this money into our programs to, to be able to utilize it. I'm more than happy to jump on a call with Susan and Alan Flora over there in Clear Lake, and, and talk with Stacy Rogers or somebody from HCD to see, you know, who's, who's actually eligible, how we can go about, you know, dividing out that money. I think that would be a, a good win for this, you know, to, you know, kind of explore those pieces. That would free up us, that would free up Clear Lake to move forward with their projects, and, and more importantly, as stated a couple times in, in this, in this meeting thus far, make sure that we're not just turning it blankly back over to Sacramento and that that money is staying in the county. So I think that's a, a good option.
All right. Thank you very much, and I've already alerted City Manager Flora yesterday that he might need to have a letter ready to go ASAP, so he, he's aware of that, and I'm sure you'll, you'll provide him the rest of the details. Supervisor Scott?
So will this turn into like first come, first served? Whoever the city come forth with the project will get with the funding? And then has the City of Clear Lake spent their original funding from 2017 on a project, since they already had money sitting there?
I do not know the answer to the 2017. I'm guessing they did because of the fact that there's a deadline for when that money needs to be spent, just like there's a deadline here. I'm not sure if that deadline has passed for 2017. I'm not sure if that deadline has passed for 2017.
I can't, I cannot speak to the 2017. And I do know the deadline was December of 2020 for that, that program. However, also I think it's not a first come, first served. It is, it's, the solicitation will require certain requirements. And again, I don't want to speak on behalf of Kevin, but it's, it's, it's a fairly stringent requirement from the developers to submit these. And it, and the final approval will still be the state in allocation of these funds to the different developers and the different projects. So it's not first come, first served. It's based on probably points and criteria, being able to meet the obligations necessary.
That, that's correct. I mean, our, our RFP is going to have to be reviewed by HCD prior to us being able to put it out to make sure that we have, that all the objectives of this, this money per the policies and procedures that they've set forth are being met. But with that said, I think there's, there's plenty of room. You know, we can certainly include, you know, someone from, from staff from the county on that selection committee or even, you know, allow them to participate in the drafting of the, the RFP as well. I think as far as options, I, I would just recommend that your board look at just maybe amending it to both cities. And then we can talk to HCD on what the best room forward for, what the best plan of action is for that. If, if they recommend splitting it, you know, directly, you know, based on, on what needs are for the project, we can do that. Maybe it's easier to accomplish through a sub recipient agreement through our process, you know? And I think this leaves the best options open and we can, we can work directly with the state to see how to best do that.
Thank you very much. Any further comments before we open it up to the public? Ms. Grant.
I just have a question. And I do understand the county has a very long history of being a very good supporter and collaborator with both cities. If you're going to change the letter to add the city of Clear Lake, then am I hearing that essentially that would just, that would then leave up to the state how that arrangement would be, would work? Because once your board relinquishes your interest to the cities, then it would be the cities working to determine how best to allocate those resources between them. Is that correct?
That is correct.
I just wanted to make sure your board knew that, that that would mean then that the allocation between the cities would no longer be up to you.
That, that is correct. Also for the money we relinquished to Clear Lake earlier as well. So it is entirely in their hands with HCD.
And, and I would say since they're the ones best prepared to spend that money versus us, that that's the only way that we can move forward in order not to lose those funds.
And, and so if your board is moving toward action, if you look at the action recommended on this item, you would want to add that the, that you're authorizing me to send a letter authorizing the reallocation of those funds to both the city of Lakeport and the city of Clear Lake. Is, is that what we need, Susan?
Yes, jointly, yes.
And that's, that's what I was asking to make sure that what we said was exactly what needed to happen. It seems that we all agree that that is the update that we're looking for.
But we very much appreciate the Lakeport city manager's offer to let the county have a seat in the process as they, you know, move forward seeking developers and, and would hope that the city of, of Clear Lake would consider that too, because we all have a vested interest in the development of housing. And certainly I, I want to echo how strongly I feel that the county needs to do something to develop its own capacity to, to move forward with projects of this nature. It's been a regular conversation at the Economic Development Task Force and needs to become some form of recommendation the board can act, act on soon.
Appreciate that. Any further comments?
Yes, I want to thank City Manager Ingram and Susan Parker for their work on this. And I just want to offer Susan Parker for any future situations when it comes to the North Shore at I E J Supervisor Crandall, you know, I would like to do my best to help you on that.
Thank you, sir.
All right, let's go ahead and open it up to the public. If you're in the Zoom room, please press the button at the bottom of your screen to raise your hand. If you're calling in via telephone, dial star nine. And anybody in the boardroom as well, if you have a public comment. If we can unmute phone 6205 Jake, please.
All right, phone 6205, I sent you an mute request. All right, looks like you're muted. Will you please confirm your first and last name?
This is Bart Levinson. Thank you for addressing this issue. I'm a Valley Fire survivor and had been hearing about the, the possible availability of community development block grants for things like housing for Lake County since shortly after the Valley Fire. And as far as I know, none has ever occurred. And if I heard correctly Supervisor Sabatier, you said that we have no housing coordinator. So I am wondering what needs to happen to end this failure, repeated failure year in, year out, as wildfires clearly take housing regularly from Lake County and we can't afford that.
And so we discussed that we would be discussing that at a later agenda item, since this is not on the agenda to get to a solution of that. But that it's important for us to continue the discussion and not drop this so that we do not have money going elsewhere. And no offense to our cities, but we, we need to help ourselves with the loss of our housing stock as well as support our cities. And so we need to figure out a better way to move forward and that will come at our later discussion.
Thank you. What we were told after the Valley Fire was that approximately $7 million was available after that fire. And if it was acted upon, an additional $3 million would be available. And it's just so incredibly painful and hard to hear that it's still unclear how Lake County can access and act on these opportunities.
And we, we, we agree with you on, on, it's not where we, it's not where we want to be. And hopefully we will change that.
Thank you.
All right. I see no further public comments, so let's go ahead and bring it back to the board. Is there a comment?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, could I just clarify? As you may recall, I was heavily involved in Lake County's recovery following the Valley Fire. I led our recovery effort. I'm, I'm not aware from my time serving there of the funding sources the speaker just stated, but, but I absolutely agree that we need to build this capacity. But I, I don't believe we had the funding that she described available to us then.
Yeah, I know the 2017 funding and this year's funding, but I'm not aware of everything. Okay, bringing it back to the board for further comments, deliberation or action?
Mr. Chair, authorize the county administrative officer or designate to drop a letter to California Department of Housing and Community Development Department authorizing the reallocation of the county's 2018 community development block grant disaster recovery multifamily housing program share of funds to the city of Lakeport and the city of Clear Lake.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Scott and a second from Supervisor Simon. Johanna, roll call please.
Okay Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for this item.
Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to, let me get back to my agenda here. 7.3, consideration of the following advisory board appointments for Middletown Cemetery District, Big Valley Management Zone Commission, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. And we have three applications before us. Are there any comments or questions about the applicants from the board? Okay, let's go ahead and open it up for the public. Any comments about the applicants that we have before us or questions? And seeing none popping up on Zoom room, our boardroom is empty. Let's go ahead and bring it back for action.
I just had one clarification. I know two of those are in my district and District One. Can I do both those motions?
I would say yes.
You do one? Okay. That's fine then. Can we do that?
You can do, you can do multiple appointees to each separate committee or board, but you should not do each committee or board together.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll make the motion.
So separate the committees.
All right, so I will move to appoint Calvin Higgins in the Middletown Cemetery District.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Simon, a second from Supervisor Scott. Johanna, roll call please.
Okay Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I will move to appoint Terry Logston to the Big Valley Management Zone.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Simon, second by Supervisor Scott. Johanna, roll call please.
Okay Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I will move to appoint Sally Peterson to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor, Supervisor Simon, second by Supervisor Scott. Johanna, roll call again, please.
Okay Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. That closes that item up. And our last item on our agenda, or second to last before our reports, 7.4, discussion and direction to staff regarding A, modification to the Lake County Administrative Penalties Ordinance and B, recouping of costs associated with hazardous vegetation abatement. Director Deleon.
Well, I'll jump in here before it gets to 12 o'clock and say good morning to the board. Thank you very much for this opportunity. This has actually been something that has been on the, the burners here for a while and I'm excited to get it started. And our objective today is to engage in some discussion and consideration and, and we will be coming back to your board with some official actions. So what I wanted to just begin with is, you know, the county has an existing code for, it's chapter 13. It includes a section for citation. And the, the way that citations and penalties for those citations, the way those penalties, if they're not paid, currently the only way that we have to recoup those costs is to put a lien on the property. And as you're aware, placing liens on properties is, is rather cumbersome. It, it, it's slow. It takes a long time, a lot of different actions. And, and then once the lien is placed on the property, there's, there's really no guarantee that, that we're going to see those costs recouped or, or those liens paid. So what, what we proposed, and I'll give a quick shout out to the city of Clear Lake and, and also to Chair Sabatier for providing information from the city of Clear Lake's ordinance. We took a number of, of the provisions of the city's ordinance and incorporated it into our current ordinance. And basically what we've done is, again, mirroring what the city did in providing additional mechanisms and tools to, to be able to pursue fines and for, for folks that violate different ordinances or, or different rules. I haven't really proposed any substantial changes to the fine, fines themselves. I've left pretty much everything in place and basically added some language to, again, provide additional options for us to pursue payment for the penalties. County Council has, has looked at this and has moved some things around and modified the format. And, and if she would care to add any additional information regarding some of the details, I'll, I'll gladly accept her input. And we're, as part of this discussion, we're, we're asking, we're asking your board to, to also consider the use of a consultant and we'll get to that. So I'll, I'll stop now and, and try to answer any questions. And again, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you very much for bringing this to us and thank you to Ms. Grant for providing some assistance in getting this to us, but I believe she has a comment.
Yes, I do have a comment. The existing ordinance as it presently reads is not limited just to the imposition of liens. It does allow, if you go through the existing ordinance under administrative penalties, it goes through a number of other options, including collections. So it's not at all limited to just the imposition of liens. For your board's information, the sections that have really been addressed through the city of Clear Lake are the section 13 point, 13 dash four seven with regard to definitions, 13 dash five four, which is the administrative appeal. I would point your board out to 51.1, which provides for an initial review by department heads. And then if the citation is still challenged, which will then impact additional workload for an enforcing department head who would be reviewing the citation. That may work better in a smaller area such as the city of Clear Lake than the unincorporated area. But as Director Deleon pointed out, these things are all open for, for your board's review today. It's not intended that there be action taken. And then 56.7 has been added, which provides for franchise tax board intercept specific performance and any of the other remedies that are already discussed in an earlier section. There is some cleanup of the ordinance for terms consistency and go back and look at some sections. Once your board determines what it wants here, but just in putting it into form, which is the only part I had a hand in, those were the sections that received the actual substantive changes for your board's review.
And I would add to that as well, that I don't believe the city of Clear Lake had a specific section on cannabis. I believe that that was added as well. Am I correct, Director Deleon?
No, our, the, the original ordinance had, has a section of, about cannabis.
Okay, okay.
And, and I'd also like to thank County Council for the, the clarification with regard to the remedies that were in the existing ordinance. And, and what I should have said is the remedy that we most frequently used for the repayment of, of fines was liens. And those were, again, proved to be quite cumbersome. And we're looking for something that will give us a much more immediate response.
Thank you for that. As we know, with our tax defaults, that adding liens is not necessarily always helpful to us, especially if somebody is not clearing violations. Maybe that means they don't really care to pay their taxes as well. Doesn't always match, but that could be the case. And also the tax intercept is really what I was looking for. That's our real strong teeth right here in this ordinance. But just to let everybody be aware that Governor Newsom has stalled the tax intercept currently due to COVID and not going after people's pocketbooks at this moment in time. But it has been an absolutely useful tool for the city of Clear Lake where it, it gets your attention. And, and it's been, it's been a very good tool to have positive results. And eventually that executive order that has stalled the tax intercept currently will expire and then we will be back to being able to utilize it. So just wanted to make sure you were aware. Are, are there any comments or questions from board members on this item?
Just that I agree with moving forward with this. I, I know if you probably looked, we have probably hundreds of thousands of dollars in abatement sitting on our tax rolls that we're never going to. in abatement, um, sitting on our tax rolls that we're never going to recover. And those are usually the first things that come off when it goes back up for auction the second time. So we need to be looking at different ways to recoup this, this funding.
Thank you. Supervisor Pyska?
Um, yeah, I agree, especially as we look at the hazardous vegetation, which is Part B of this. Um, as we set the standard for property owners in our county, we need to be able to, um, recoup the cost for abatement and have more of a revolving fund rather than let it sit out in liens.
Thank you. Any other comments?
No, obviously, well, yeah, just having the conversation, I think, is the right direction. I know that, um, I know we're specifically talking about recovering on the abatements, but hopefully down the road too, we'll be talking about continued conversation of abandoned vehicles and other things too, that we've talked about in the past. So, yeah, glad that we're having the conversation and moving forward. At least we're looking at drafting some more teeth to help us get done what we want to achieve here as a board.
Absolutely. So I unfortunately left my page of notes on my other computer, so I'm going to do my best to remember the things that I found that I'm looking to see if we can change. Uh, so one of them is on the definitions. It's on the bottom of Page 2, where it says cannabis operations. And I think it's important that we look at this as a tool to go after absolutely illegal grows, grows that don't belong in residential areas, and also violations of legal grows. And I see that as three separate items, because to me, the strength of the enforcement needs to be somewhat tapered, uh, depending on which one we're going after. Uh, but here it says cannabis operations means any business activity, and I, I think it should be any activity regarding cannabis, uh, involving cannabis other than, and it says other than personal use. And I think it should also be for personal use, because we, if we're going to go after you for any violation of the code, then we should also be going after you for a violation of personal use for cannabis. Uh, that's, um, it, it's, it's, and I know that it's just a definition, but that definition is used later on in our document here. Uh, so I, I'd like to make sure that we look at all the entirety of issues that we could have with cannabis. Um, then it says here, and I know it's our usual status quo, um, but let's have, let, let's have the conversation. We're saying no more than 30 days. And I get that there are certain other rules where we shortened our, um, amount of time that it takes for you to, um, clean up your violations. I'm wondering if it's possible to say that you must have a plan submitted on how you're going to clear your violation within 15 days? Because 30 days, if you're a neighbor, and it's an absolute mess, and it's only getting worse, can be some of the worst experiences that you can go through. And we know that 30 days typically, it's, that's, that's the minimum. It's usually going to be a lot more, because we want to try and work with people to get to the, to, to the solution. But if there's no plan being submitted uh, within two weeks, how are you going to get that cleaned up within the next two weeks? Uh, so I would like to see if we can add something like that, um, that the violations, the fines start if you didn't provide a plan, or at least communicate with us that you've received this, and that you're going to do something about it. Um, because giving us a plan or starting on Day 29 is not result in, in meeting what we would like you to do. And we, we have a huge uphill battle in getting things cleaned up in Lake County, and I think that our timelines don't necessarily help us. Uh, and, and, and it, too often, it seems lenient more so than, than, than strong. Uh, and I think that we should be strong. Um...
And Chair Sabatier, excuse me for interrupting. You're, you're specifically speaking of the 30 days that's mentioned on the top of Page 6. That's going to be in Section 48.3 Notice of Violation, where it says the reasonable period of time for purposes of this section, and it's talking about, um, um, when, when they need to respond. Is the 30 days, is that the 30 days you're speaking of?
Yeah, which would be for all violations, not specifically, like later on how it talks about cannabis. I think that if you have garbage next to you, uh, it, it's something that we need to make sure that we're, we're getting that communication. If we're being ignored, I, I don't know what's possible legally. I know that we have to have reasonable timeframes, but at the same time, it, it feels like we can shrink that and at least strengthen it by saying, we need to know what your plan is to actually deal with these situations. Ms. Grant?
You can require a 15 days, but, but the question then is, and what happens if they do not? And then what's your hammer, and what level of administrative review do you want to add to it? Because whenever you seek to impose requirements on people, you also have a counterbalance of due process. So you can do it. It would depend upon how you wanted to treat the failure to comply with, with that provision.
And, and as I suggested, that the administrative fines begin if we don't receive that level of communication or plan on how to treat the violation versus waiting the full 30 days, or the full extent of what this ordinance allows, where those fines would then start after the fact.
So you want to also then change the correction period for 30 days to if there's no plan within the 15 days?
Yes.
Okay, so there'll be multiple sections of the ordinance. Uh, Director DeLeon pointed to just one, but there will be...
Right.
Will be further. All right.
And it's just a suggestion, uh, because again...
It's doable, as long as, again, there has to be a notice. There has, it, it's not that it is not doable. It's just that it's a ripple that will have to go through the entire ordinance to ensure that then it's all consistent. It's not difficult. It just takes some attention.
Correct, correct. Thank you. Um, let me see, and again, I apologize for, um, losing my notes. Um... So here on section, I don't know what section it is, but it's at the bottom of Page 8 on Number 2, just above 52.2. Uh, it says, "In the event that the use of structure in violation may be permitted with an appropriate permit up to maximum of five times the amount of the standard fee for such a permit." I don't want to change that. I just wanted to highlight that, because I don't see that in the cannabis section. And if you didn't get a permit for cannabis, I think that this needs to be followed through with as well. And I'm not sure if, how it's written, because cannabis is split, if we can still follow that rule for cannabis violations, or if it needs to be specifically and expressly written in the cannabis portion, that in the event uh, that you are in violation, uh, that your violation needs to have a permit up to a maximum of five times the amount. I'm not quite sure, so I wanted to at least put that out there. Does that cover cannabis, or do we need to be explicitly stated within the cannabis section?
Well, I think that what your board's talking about is imposing much of this, not just in relation to cannabis, but in relation to any circumstance where these violations occur.
So my problem with that is it says "structure." And cannabis is not a structure, or does not necessarily require a structure. And so that, that's why...
In that case, it would have to be something specific.
And, and if I could add, I, I think they're, I think they're separate. Um, the, the section that you read about the five times, the, um, let me get, turn to it.
At the bottom of Page 8?
Yeah, and it talks about a structure in violation. Um, that's related to, um, the, the, the Notice of Violation back to 48.3 is, is related to, um, pertains to building, plumbing, electrical, structural, or zoning issues. Uh, that, those are the types of, of actions that, uh, in the event is the structure is in violation and it requires permits. Um, I, I, those two are connected. And, and the very next section, 52.2, is Administrative Penalties for Failure to Obtain and/or Maintain Any Permit Related to Cannabis Operations. And so, for me, the, the, the penalty changes, the, the discussion changes.
And that, that's the way that I read it as well, uh, and that's why I just wanted to bring it up and ask. Ms. Grant?
And you can certainly keep them separate. What I'm saying is if you're looking at revamping the ordinance, you can make other changes to, to incorporate a number of violations just across the board. So this is how it's been done, because you already had an existing ordinance. Cannabis was added to it. It depends upon the direction of your board today, how those things can be addressed, but there's multiple ways. So that's just an effort to give you as much flexibility as you need in order to get to the end goal you want to reach.
Okay. Um... I just want to type these up real quick, and again, I apologize. So then, uh, this is where it comes up on 52.2, Administrative Penalties for Failure to Obtain and/or Maintain Any Permit Related to Cannabis Operations. That's when that definition comes into play, where it says not personal use. And so these would not hit anybody who's growing a full backyard of cannabis in a residential area, and that is not the comfort level, um, that we want to have for quality of life in our residential areas. And we know this is still a problem. And to not act on that problem within this ordinance, I think we're missing something. And so I, that's why I was looking at revamping the definition of cannabis operations to also mean personal use, as well as illegal grow and legal grow violations. And so if we can somehow make that, uh, cannabis operations cover all three possibilities, uh, then that would be to me, to my, better to my liking. Granted, it depends on the way the board feels about that.
Just a question on, on the personal use, because personal use means under six plants, correct?
I believe so.
So do we have any, I guess the question would be for Anita, and adding that in there on the personal use, do we have the authority to do that? Because, you know, once you're growing under six plants, then I thought that was kind of out of our, our realm.
Ms. Grant?
Well, personal use is, is exactly as you say. So I'm not quite sure, you said if they're growing a whole bunch of cannabis plants, that would be greater than six.
Yeah, that's not personal.
Which would be a violation. Uh, I think there's a way to revamp this, to address what you're talking about, and still stay, stay on the sunny side of personal use. The other thing I'd point out is these definitions, some of them are run through other aspects of the Lake County Code. So it would be important to go back and look to see, to make sure that you're not creating inadvertent inconsistencies. That can also be overcome. You just have to add the language to do so. So I think this can happen. It may not be just as, as simple as a strike of a pen out of words, but I think your point, Supervisor Sabatier, can, can be addressed, while at the same time acknowledging what Supervisor Simon is saying with regard to personal use.
And we do have an entire ordinance for personal use. It's our adult use ordinance that we have in Article 27, and there's possibilities of violating that, just like there's possibilities of violating any other code that we have. It doesn't mean that we're going after people who are doing personal use. It's people who are violating it, um, and...
Exactly, yes. It, it's just, it's just wordsmithing.
Correct, correct. Um, and then, then we get to the nitty gritty of the, um, fines for cannabis. And I know that this has gone through the Planning Commission. Uh, the Planning Commission had offered to do $1,000 per plant per day. Um, and right now here, it says, uh, within 30 days, which I want to discuss as well, and $1,000 per day, not per plant per day. When I do per plant per day, let's say you have 300 plants, and it's for the full season you're being fined, we're looking at potentially $9 million worth of fines. That just seems to be slightly excessive. Um, however, and, and that, that's per plant per day. If you look at it on a per day, at $1,000 for, let's just say, the maximum amount of the season, you're looking at $180,000. With somebody who can, um, who can grow $2 million worth of profits per acre, or let's just say a million dollars, $180,000 is not necessarily a huge, um, hit. It has to be somewhere within that medium that we have to figure out what's reasonable, because I know that's something that we have to make sure that we look for, but also what's something that they're not just going to snub their nose to us and, and just continue doing what they're doing to the detriment of those surrounding areas, uh, and to the, to the detriment of the quality of life. Uh, so I, I want to discuss that right there. Uh, but the 30 days, I believe right now, we are doing either 10 or 7 days, and I'd love to make that as minimum as possible. And I'm even looking at a separation of a legal grow with a violation, in my opinion, should follow the same basic concept as a business with a violation, um, such as a restaurant, uh, such as somebody, a, a building that doesn't meet code. Something has occurred, and they need to fix those violations. Uh, because we shouldn't be as hard on our illegal grows as we are on our legal grows. And we need to figure out how to separate that, because right now, the process to be legal is such an arduous process versus the process to just throw some plants somewhere illegally, which is unfortunate. So to treat them the same with the outcomes of violations seems to not help the fact that we're trying to get people to be in the legal market. So I don't like the 30 days. I think that needs to be minimum as much as possible for those growing illegally. Uh, and then maybe looking at, how can we connect that to, um, those who are, have approached CDD, have obtained a legal license, and just happen to have a violation? Um, I think that there's a way to be a little bit lighter than those who have not approached CDD at all. Um, that's what I, that's the, the, the major portion of, of, um, the stuff that I had written down. And then, uh, the last one is, um, remedies. I'm going to try and find it, but I don't know how easy it is. It talks about how you can, if a owner, a property owner has multiple properties, that we can put the assessments on another property. And I know that might just be a standard template thing that we left in there, or maybe we added it in there, but I am not comfortable with assessing a different property that doesn't have a violation versus really just focusing on that one property. Um...
Remedies begin in sections...
Remedies begin in Section 13 dash 5 second, 7 at sec, if you're looking for it.
And I apologize again for... But I, but I had a problem with that, and it's in there somewhere. I, I know that I saw it, um, as I read through it. Um, and then also, it says that a hearing officer in the public hearing does not have to be there. I would like to, to say that I, I don't agree with that. Um, I don't know that it has to be that enforcement officer. Let's just say somebody has quit the job, retired the job, and by the time the appeal gets there, they're no longer there. But I would say hearing officer or their superior, their supervisor must be at the public hearing, because right now, we say that if the, um, appellant doesn't show up to the hearing, it automatically defaults to, we deny you. But if we don't show up, we don't have to. And I just, I, I just think that's not very right. Um, and so I would like to see that changed as well. Um, yeah. And those are all my notes that I can remember. Again, I apologize for kind of being scattered today.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Grant?
Uh, all of these things, again, are, are things from a legal perspective, obviously. Director DeLeon will speak to operationally. Are things that you can do. As I said, the, the changes to the ordinance that were made for today are minimal. The penalties have been around for years in those amounts. If you look at the existing ordinance online, you'll see when these things were enacted. Uh, much of the things that you're talking about with regard to cannabis, that's been three years. Uh, collection agencies, judgment, civil actions, penalties, all of those have been in place for a number of years. Uh, if your board wants to revamp this and make it more general or more specific, and deal with specific circumstances, I'd suggest that now is absolutely the time to make those changes, and to revamp this in any way you find that it will be most usable.
I, I thought today was the time absolutely to make those changes, so we can come back with something more, um, conclusive of all the things that we're looking at. And, and I will ask Director DeLeon another question. And I will ask Director DeLeon another question. Since we do have a category for cannabis, I know we've been working on this in the AVA group to bring these administrative fines, but these fines don't match the fines that are occurring in other jurisdictions such as Clear Lake where it's about, I believe, $350 administrative fine for AVA abandoned vehicles. Here, we would be doing the 100, 200, and 500. Do we need a subsection for that, or is that a separate conversation, just like we have a subsection for cannabis?
Well, I, I think, I think we can do whatever your board directs us to do. We, again, I didn't change any of the, the existing dollar amounts in, in, of any of the infractions. And so we can certainly look at abandoned vehicles as a separate section. I've been frantically taking notes here, so I apologize. My, my head's been down here. I've been trying to take notes on the discussion to make sure I incorporate all of, all of the concerns, and we can certainly add that. Or we can look at the base dollar amounts that, that are currently in the ordinance. So I, I'm, I can, I can do whichever your board prefers.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Grant?
The infractions are there and they're a statutory set by, by virtue of the government code. For years, counties have tried to get the legislature to increase the amounts of those infractions, and for years, the legislature has, has decided it wasn't worth the trouble. But that's only for the infraction. That would be the, the criminal imposition here, and it, it's separate in a part, and as the ordinance has stated, these are all cumulative remedies. So the, the addition of the 1,000, 3,000, et cetera. The only caveat with regard to those fines is that the Constitution prohibits excessive fines and fees. So it has to be something that is going to be related to your board's findings as to the damage to be avoided. And that is what justifies the fees. You may remember there were some jurisdictions, at one point, we're charging $10,000 a day. Well, those have gone the way of the dodo bird and Australopithecus. So they, they can't be sustained. So as long as the fines that you're seeking to be imposed have a factual predicate based upon the damage or harm you're hoping to avoid, you should be able to avoid the prohibition of excessive fines and fees.
And I think that it should typically be based on services, hours spent and average things like that. That's typically where we come up with our fees.
It, well, this is a penalty, however, so it doesn't have to be based upon services. The penalty can just be based upon the, the harm, the, the fact that certain kinds of environmental damage is not subject to, to be easily remediated. It may be the influx of additional law enforcement, the dangers to children, it can be all kinds of, of things you're looking to avoid, and the penalty is essentially a deterrent. It's stop doing this because this, this creates a great deal of harm. And that's where you get a higher number than what the government code will otherwise allow you to charge. So as I said, it's, it's just your board's factual analysis that has some basis in, in grounded findings.
Okay. And I'd like to put Supervisor Simon on the hot seat. I know that we've talked about the administrative fines for a while. I would like to see them, AVA, being added to this ordinance, just to make sure that we get it done. Just looking...
Absolutely. You know, I think I commented earlier that, you know, it's a long-term conversation that we're dealing with, with ABA, and as County Council Anita Grant has said, really, it would be the deterrent part of it. We know how much it costs to remove RVs and other folks who are abandoned vehicles, so, and we know that it does come with, it doesn't just drop off the vehicle, it also gets full of garbage, you know, there are environmental concerns that happen. So coming up with and raising those penalties are very important. I think it's going to help us curb the situation we currently have. So yeah, I'm in favor. I don't have the number, I think you mentioned 350. I just don't think that's going to get us anywhere we want to go because in our, speaking with, you know, CHP and other things, you know, fine of $100, those types of things, it just, it doesn't have the effect that we're looking for.
Right.
So I'm in agreement, absolutely.
And plus, it helps us recoup some of those funds that we're spending from AVA by going through some of the processes that we're now offering to go through here, which helps us get more funding in order to continue the cleaning up of our neighborhoods.
Absolutely. And I think the encouragement is, obviously, there are proper ways to work to get rid of your vehicles and other things instead of just abandoning them, and I think we're doing a good job of that. We just, we need this other teeth to, to really set the tone on, you know, do it the correct way, and there's opportunities for you.
Just for point of clarification, sir, presently, as far as removal of vehicles under 1344 of the code, Lake County Code, under penalty, it says any person who violates any provisions of this article is guilty of an infraction or misdemeanor, which may be prosecuted as an alternative to other remedies contained herein, and which is punishable by a fine not exceeding $500, et cetera. So is, is that where you want then it just to be a reference back to the administrative penalties that will be provided in this ordinance?
I, I want to make sure that the administrative penalties are able to be, or at least the remedies are eligible to be used in those infractions.
That's an easy tie-up.
Okay. And then just real quick, my final thing, I found it in the text, 56.3 on page 16, says "The amount of any unpaid administrative penalty plus interest may be declared a lien on any real property owned by the responsible parties within the county of Lake against whom an administrative penalty has been imposed as follows." And I don't know if I'm not reading it correctly, but by saying any real property, it means that we can just pick and choose where we place a lien, and I'm, I'm slightly uncomfortable with, with that concept unless I'm reading it incorrectly and not understanding it right. But I, I am done with all of my comments, and I appreciate you all giving me the time. Any further comments or questions? Let's go ahead and open it up to the public. Anybody have comments or questions? And seeing none, let's go ahead and bring it back to the board. Any further conversation, deliberation?
Just wanted to highlight Chair Sabatier that on the second page, it states that, that we have proposed additional modifications that are shown in red on the attached draft. I never was able to determine that, it didn't, wasn't in red, so I think, I'm not sure if anyone else noticed that, but it was...
I, I think it was a scanned document because I couldn't even highlight some of the words, so I think maybe the red just came all out, black and white, and so it was difficult to tell the difference.
And so I, I know that there's recommendations also to provide consulting and whatnot, and I'm, I'm fine with some of that. But I would, for me, I would rather have a little more time to be able to tell what's in red and what's not, and grasp this a little more before just you making some decisions here. I do like the idea of this, and I want to move forward with it. I just want more, I, I really want to be making an educated decision and be able to look at everything better, so.
Mr. Chair, I, I can tell you that the changes appear in 13-47 definitions, 13-54 administrative appeal, and 56.7.
Okay.
I, I had to ask for the red line version, too.
Supervisor Crandall will, will be happy to get that to you. And as I mentioned early in my presentation, this is a kickoff and, and just really wanted to get the discussion started, and we will certainly be coming back to you with, with revision, but we can get you that, the one that has the actual red text in it, and we'll be happy to do that. And I apologize for that oversight. In our haste to get this on the agenda, I sent this down and, and it, it got, over time, while it was sitting in granite, because it, it got modified and, and the red went away. But all of the comments that were in red are in this document, but I will get you the previous version so that you can, you can compare. You also brought up the use of the consultant, and so I, before we jump to item B, and if there are certainly more discussion about this, I'll wait, but I, I do want, before we move to item B, I wanted to talk about kind of part two of this discussion, and that is the use of a consultant. So I'll, I'll, I'll wait for your cue.
Okay. Thank you very much. I, I just want to ask, because I, I spoke a lot, is there anyone who feels that we should cross anything off the list of things that I suggested? Is there, that way we can make sure and provide that to Director DeLeon so he doesn't work on something that we're not going to be supporting? I'm seeing a census. Okay, perfect. So I'm done with that conversation, and if everyone else is too, then Director DeLeon, you have your notes. Do you need any repetition of anything?
I don't think so. I just, before we move to item B, I just wanted to just have a general discussion with your board regarding the use of consultants as a collection agency. Again, then we're patterning this after the city of Clear Lake. They use a particular firm. I mentioned in my cover memo to your board that the firm that the city uses provides a collection services to over 225 code enforcement agencies in California. So they, they know what they're doing, they, they have a, a process that they follow, and, and I know that the city of Clear Lake has seen some significant, some significant results through the use of the consultant. With your concurrence, we would come back to your board with a, a separate item to utilize the services of a consultant, and again, the purpose for today was to just bring that to your attention and, and generate some general discussion.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions about this consultant, the use of consultants? I, I think that you're very correct, that it could be very slow and time-consuming, and if we can get someone else who knows how to do this process to, to make it happen, let's take that away from staff and let's go ahead and see, see what we can get out of those consultants. Looks like you have consensus to go ahead and, yes, Supervisor...
Obviously in support of it, but you know, I think in part B here, obviously, it just talks directly just about the zones of benefit, and so we're going to...
This was before we got to part B. He just wanted to talk about consultants. We'll get to part B.
All right. I thought we were on...
And it looks to me that you have your consensus, Director DeLeon, and let's go ahead and move on to part B.
So this, you know, this has been a question since, frankly, since the, the zones were created, what mechanisms were there in place to recoup costs? And you know, what we're hopeful is that with this discussion about part A, that perhaps that would be a good mechanism to use for the recoupment of costs for hazardous vegetation abatement in, in our zones of benefit. And again, if, if this is something that's of interest to the board and, and you feel that it, it is a reasonable use of, of the revisions to Chapter 13, then if we need to make specific sections for hazardous vegetation, I'll, I'll look to some guidance from County Council. But you know, again, it was, I, I believe the two are tied together, and, and that was the reason for including it in today's discussion.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments? Supervisor Prieska?
So we, yeah, we have the hazardous vegetation abatement within the zone of benefit, and then we have the hazardous vegetation abatement outside of the zone of benefit. So we have to make sure and have the discussion so that both of those are covered. And we're looking at approximately 90 lots, is that right, Director DeLeon, in the zone of benefit? A lot of those, they're out of county residents or deceased, so if we don't have a contractor go after with collections, we're going to have a lot of these just sitting with liens on property for a long time. And it's important to get that, those funds back into the revolving fund.
Any other comments or questions? Supervisor Scott?
Just that I definitely agree with that because I know when we put up these funds, we, the county was hoping to recoup them and have it be something that's revolving that is not, wasn't supposed to be one-time money.
Any other comments? Supervisor Simon?
Just my comment, obviously, and I think Supervisor Prieska talked about it, obviously in favor of it in, in the benefit zone, but looking how it ties into the vegetation abatement ordinance for the entire county as we all move forward because ultimately, we're looking for those teeth. Let's move forward.
And I think that it originally came to our, was brought to our, or CDD's attention, our, our attention due to the benefit zone coming to us with the assessments that came to us a month or so ago. I forget the exact timeline. So I appreciate that we're having this conversation. I would love, in the future, once we have this ordinance set, that that's what we use to help recoup. I have a question for Ms. Grant. Is it possible to retroactively use an ordinance that we don't have yet because we're still working on it for the work that was already approved and assessed this year?
And I'm sorry, an ordinance to do what?
The changes that we're talking about with the administrative fines and the way to recoup money.
All of those already exist, Supervisor. That's what I was saying. Other than the intercept for franchise tax board, collections, all of those things are already available, so you wouldn't have to retro anything.
But the franchise tax intercept is our number one contributor to help ensure revolving door. Obviously, we can assess the penalties on a property or whatever else is already available to us, but the tax intercept is going to be the big winner for us in, in really going after people rather than them ignoring us until we either sell their property because they haven't paid their taxes, or they sell their property themselves. And so...
I'm afraid in the meantime, what you could do is because a collection agency is certainly allowed under the existing ordinance and has been for years, you could put it out to a collection service, but the franchise tax board, you wouldn't be able to retroactively put back. I would also note that the hazardous vegetation, there's still an ordinance pending somewhere with regard to boosting of some penalties for hazardous vegetation as well.
Thank you for reminding us of that. And so, yeah, I was just looking to see if it was possible to retroactively, just because we've spent some, but let's use whatever means are possible at this moment in time. And in the future, we now have the tax intercept eligible to us to use. Yes?
I'm just going to bring up with the hazardous vegetation abatement ordinance, Supervisor Simon and I are going to be having code enforcement present on that during our virtual town hall on the 6th. And I think this is going to be the first time that this is presented to the public in a way that is educational and transparent. It's been talked about many times, it's been difficult to find on our website, so we may get some feedback after we have this presentation. And in the weeks and months going forward, what works and what doesn't work. So I, that may be something that we're going to look at again in the near future, once more people really get their arms around what's going to be expected of them.
Okay. Any further comments from the board? Okay. Let's go ahead and open it up to the public, since we did not go over item B until just now. And I do see that there's been a hand raised for a while, phone 7257. Did you wish to make a comment on this item?
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Thank you. This is Bart Levinson. I attended the Planning Commission meeting on, on Thursday, and what seems to be coming about is some confusion in the public about whether there is adequate staffing within the county to pursue any of these remedies or actions. And so I just want to put that in, that I applaud what you're doing. I am... And so I just want to put that in, that I applaud what you're doing, I am grateful for it, and I am mindful that our well-meaning departments, our very well-meaning departments, may not have the staff they need to actually carry out these actions, and could that be part of this conversation?
Thank you very much. I'm going to let Director Deleon tell you exactly where we stand with code enforcement, because I hear we're at a very good position right now with code enforcement, and code enforcement has always been following these processes. We're just strengthening those processes so that there's a better way to recoup the money spent of public funds to get some of this work and these services done. So there may not be an increase of services, but there will definitely be an increase in revenue from those services to help make sure we can provide those services some more. But we do have a good team right now, and I'll let Director Deleon speak on that.
And thank you, yes, for the first time, for as long as I can remember, we're fully staffed with code enforcement. However, the caller brings up, brings up a great point as part of our discussion on part two of the previous item, and that is through the use of a consultant to help, you know, we can write citations all day long, but it's the enforcement of those citations and the collection of the penalties that is a real problem. And so, and to her point, we probably don't have staff for that. So that will all be part of my recommendation for the use of a consultant to pursue these. And so, her point is well-taken, and, yeah, we are staffed, and, but with the additional staff comes the additional workload of pursuing those penalties.
Thank you for that response. And so that will do it for our public comments, and so this was more of a direction than any kind of approval of anything. Director Deleon, I think you got the direction that you were looking for? Okay? And so I think that this, unless there's any further comments, I think this will conclude this item. All right, thank you very much for your time today, and thank you for a good discussion. CAO Hutchinson, would you be able to help me to find that comment? I just want to finish up public comment real quick.
I hope so. Let's see. So Jake, we're talking about a public comment that, oh, here it is. Yes, I found it. So there was a public comment in the chat at 10:10 a.m. It pertains to the 9:06 a.m. item. If you'd like to reopen that for a moment, I could read that comment into record. It was the person named Elaine, who was still present, but at that time could not get audio.
And I don't believe that we ever closed it. I think I kind of left public comment open-ended because of that issue, and so I think that we're good to go.
Okay, so what Elaine said, Elaine Zacker said in the chat is, "I would like to suggest that the board invite OSHA mask experts to teach county residents about mask wearing. The OSHA mask experts are the people who go into workplaces, including hospitals, and teach staff what masks to wear, how to wear them, how long to wear them, and when to dispose of them, and a lot more. I see people making obvious mass mistakes, wearing the same cloth mask every day and never washing it, wearing a mask while exercising. If you sweat under a mask, it creates a moist, dark environment in which bacteria and viruses thrive." I saw an interview with OSHA mask experts where they stated that the way most people wear masks does more harm than good. Part of the OSHA mandate is that, is education. So I believe that if they cannot come in person to teach, they will likely have a video or at least some printed guidelines.
Okay, thank you very much for reading that, and I apologize that technical difficulties made it so this public comment could not be verbalized. And I think that we are going to now close our public comment. I believe we've gone through every single item on our agenda. The only one left is our supervisor's weekly calendar, am I correct?
Didn't we have public comment from Mary Draper?
That's right, that Mary Draper was looking to make a comment. I know we did receive that email, and if she's not here, I'm going to go ahead and go with the suggestion from Supervisor Simon and read that email. Why am I raising my hand? I'm not trying to make a comment. Yeah, she is not here, so let me see if I can get her email. So Mary Draper's email says, "I am requesting some clarity on the resolution passed by the Board of Supervisors on March 16, 2020. It's the resolution authorizing Lake County Community Development Department on how to proceed with applicants who have previously received any early activation for their projects. Whereas early activations have been useful during this backlog, it is important to ensure an efficient timeline for approving all use permits, and the Board of Supervisors is committed to reducing that timeline. Now therefore be it resolved that for all applicants, an early application permit shall be provided if (a) an initial study has been submitted and received for the use permit project; (one) if documentation within the initial study provides adequate information regarding the impact to the environment, staff may approve the early application permit based on Chapter 21, Section 27.4; and (two) sequoia notification process is an integral part of any project, including prior to providing an early activation permit. My questions, (one) does the above apply to all applicants or just applicants who previously received an EA? (Two) is submitted and received, and those are in quotes, does that mean after the planner has received the initial study from the applicant and has determined that all issues can be mitigated, or does it mean after it has been received back from the state clearinghouse? In addition, (one) is the planner to write up the EA and submit it to Scott Deleon for his signature, or is Scott to tell the planner to write up the EA? (Two) when are the site visits to be scheduled immediately after the application is deemed complete? Questions on site preparation? If a site has been previously disturbed, can the fencing and disking of the previously disturbed ground be started at any time? (Two) the ordinance states that nothing can be completed, that can't be undone before the use permits is granted. Does the Board of Supervisors believe fencing, cameras, and irrigation can be removed? I would very much appreciate the clarity on the above issues." And I'm going to make sure and forward that, I think it was already received by Director Deleon, but I think he's probably the best candidate to respond to those questions, rather than responding to those questions live here, where I don't want to put out a false sense of hope or information. And that will do it for our public comments. We'll go ahead and close that up, thank you for reminding me about that. And let's go ahead and go with weekly calendars, and we'll start with Supervisor Simon.
All right, just finishing up the board meeting today. I did have an economic development task force, but that has been moved to May 12 for tomorrow. Don't have anything on the calendar, just will be turning phone calls and emails from constituents on Thursday. On Friday, I will be heading over to Woodland. I've been asked to do the keynote speech for the graduating class of our Woodland Community College. I'll be taping that on Friday, and then obviously Saturday and Sunday, I have some personal stuff will be taken care of this weekend, and then back here on Monday, the 3rd, for a meeting with Carol. I think there may be another potential meeting on the 3rd also with potentially Supervisor Pyska and also NCO and some stuff with the Risk Reduction Authority, and then back here on the Board of Supervisors for the 4th.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Crandall?
Tomorrow I have the RCRC meeting. It got pushed back from last week, Wednesday to this week, so I'll be doing that. Thursday, Lake County Solid Waste Task Force, says at 10 a.m., and then I have another meeting about cannabis tax, I think, on Thursday. That's still going on Friday. Be doing my best to look out for some of the agenda items and get prepared for when this, what we just discussed, item 7.4 comes back. And then Monday, I have Middle Creek Restoration, and then I'm back here on Tuesday.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Scott?
Tomorrow, I have a BOs ad hoc committee meeting in the morning, and in the afternoon, first five starts at 2:00. On Thursday, I have a meeting with constituents at 10:00, and then the cannabis tax meeting at 2:30, meeting with constituents on Friday at 9:00. Then Monday, meeting with SEIU in the morning, and then preparing for the meeting on Tuesday.
Perfect, thank you. Supervisor Pyska?
Tomorrow morning, I have the ad hoc committee. I'm having a call with constituents interested in starting a new charter school. Cavern radio check-in is that evening, Thursday, have a couple meetings, and then Thursday evening at 6 o'clock, Kelseyville Fire Protection District is having their Zoom about potentially a new fire station. Friday, it looks like the American Rescue Plan meeting. Saturday, drive-through preparedness event at Kelseyville Rivera. Sunday, I will be at the Fiddler's Jam at Eli's Stage for the first Sunday of the month. The 3rd, my weekly meeting, risk reduction meeting? Is that, we have a NCO risk reduction meeting? Oh, I think that's with...
Yes.
Yes, that's...
Yes, they put that on our calendars to talk about services to the RRA.
That's what I was talking about, I was like, I knew it was RRA, so...
And then we do have to have our quick planning meeting at some point, we have to set that date. And the Cobb Area Council is talking about the Cobbler Festival, if they're going to do that or not, so I'll be at that meeting. And that's it for me.
Thank you very much. So today, I think we'll be able to do our agenda review before the day is over, and then I have a meeting with IT to finalize some work on my county laptops, so thank you very much to staff for providing that, so I can get some work done at home within our network. Then on Wednesday, I made a lot of mistakes, and I seem to have three meetings all at the same time, but there is a Lake County drought preparedness workshop that I wanted to take part in with the State Water Board, just to kind of get an understanding of what will be expected and what's coming down the pipe. And also, there is a Clearlake Clearly Creative Discussion, speaking with the Rural Arts Initiative on more projects coming into the city of Clearlake. Still have some things that I've been working on over the past year that will be coming to fruition soon, and I cannot wait for those arts projects to be installed. Later on that day, if I'm, if the drought conversation is over, I'll be able to make it to a CC4C meeting, it's been a while. Lake County Fire Protection District is having their meeting as well, I believe, later that evening. The next day, I am meeting with the Lake County Solid Waste Task Force, having a discussion with our CAO. I'm meeting with some folks who are interested in building some housing in the city of Clearlake, and then a CSAC phone call with updates on COVID-19 and where we stand at the state. American Rescue Plan, basically a continuation of our CARES Act ad hoc committee that now transformed into the American Rescue Plan. And the following Monday, Middle Creek Restoration Project, meeting with our CAO, and another phone call with CSAC to get an update on where we are with COVID. And finally, I am remembering to make an announcement that we are going, we've been planning to expand our Treasurer-Tax Collector Ad Hoc Committee. It's been about maybe over a month at least that I've been, that I've been supposed to say this, but here I'm making it official. We want to expand the Treasurer-Tax Collector Ad Hoc Committee to also include a review of our status and situation, and how we can help to better support our assessor's office, assessor recorder's office. And so we will be going and following up with that soon, and looking forward to how we can better help the situation in that department, and that includes Supervisor Pyska in that ad hoc committee as well. And so that does it for me. Did I miss anything? Okay. Then we are going to go into closed session. We have three items, 8.1, Public Employee Evaluation, title, Public Works, Water Resources, Community Development Director. 8.2, Public Employee Appointment pursuant to Government Code, Section 54957B. A, Interviews of Public Health Officer. B, Appointment of Public Health Officer. 8.3, Conference with Legal Counsel, Significant Exposure to Litigation pursuant to Government Code, Section 54956.9. D2E3, Claim of Lily. And with that, we will go ahead and close our public session and go into closed session. Thank you, everybody, for joining us.